Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is December the 19th, 2016, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we confirm that we have Steve Moss on the telephone?
Supervisor Moss?
I'm here.
Okay, we'll begin the meeting then with the invocation by Reverend Jerry Dunn of the Oak Street Baptist Church. And then I'd like to ask Gary Watson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, as we come to you this morning, we want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Father, we thank you for the fact that you are the sovereign God, and, Father, it's our privilege to be able to walk in fellowship with you. Father, we ask you today to be with each person who has a part in this meeting. We ask you to bless our commissioner and supervisors. And, Father, we ask that you guide them by your Spirit as they make decisions that will affect all of us. Father, we pray that you would lead and guide us by your Holy Spirit. We thank you again for just the season of the year, for life that you've given to us, for the blessings that we each hold, and we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'll entertain a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held January the 5th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103, A3 and 4. This will be to discuss items noted in the agenda with an asterisk.
Go ahead.
Second motion?
Motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Going on to the official business to come before the Board this morning. Discussion pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Extra, do we have anything?
I do not, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and then committee and legislative reports, beginning with Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We had a quad state local government meeting. We moved the treasures from Riverside County, California, to Washington County, Utah. We went over the desert landscape conservative cooperative pilot program, which is going to be in southeast Cochise. One of the things that's kind of interesting is that we did, went over the raven control that the feds had been working on. At the time, there was 100,000 ravens, and they decided to get rid of some of the ravens because of the death they caused to the baby tortoises. And so they killed five, and now there's 190,000 ravens, so it's not working too well. And we're doing a draft on H.R. 4313 and Senate Bill 3334, historical right-of-ways. That's all, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you for that report. Supervisor Watson?
Sounds like there was a great deal of satisfaction there with that report.
Maybe there's bad shots.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to let you know that I attended the County Supervisors Association meeting on last Thursday. The night before that, I attended the small caucus meeting, which was quite entertaining. Those are the counties of which have the lowest number of populations, and they have a unique view of many of the items that we tackle with every day. But I just want to let you know that made both meetings, and we went over the legislative agenda for the next year. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Angus. Supervisor Moss?
Nothing, thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll report that I also attended the CSA meeting in Phoenix along with Supervisor Watson and Supervisor Moss. Okay, do we have a county administrator's report?
I have no report today, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for the approval of November 15th, 2016, special meeting minutes.
I'll move.
Second motion?
Motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll now go on to the call to the public. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the Board. I do have two people that have signed up to speak. We'll begin with Jennifer Jones. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Jennifer Jones, La Posa North, LTVI Court Site. Good morning. A couple of meetings back, there was an issue, I believe it was about making a change or accepting a road into the county system, and that item was deferred under the belief that there was a, some sort of committee with the Golden Paradise landowners. And I spoke before the Board, and I informed the Board at that time that there was no such committee. However, that stirred up a lot of controversy in Golden Valley, and I'm, you know, proud to say as a landowner in Golden Valley that we now have such a committee. I guess it's one of those things, be careful what you wish for, right? So the Board members of the committee are Kathleen Mishler, Rick Armstrong, his wife Deanna Armstrong, and myself. We've held two meetings so far with the community to find out what the issues of concern are for the area. Obviously, road conditions are a big one. Crime is another issue. There's been apparently a rash of burglaries that may be related. We talked about a lot of things, answered a lot of questions with the community, things like how to fill out an open records request, registering voters, you know, which county department they may need to go to to have their concerns addressed, or if they don't understand how to do something, we're willing to be a liaison for them. Additionally, any of the committee members are, do have the permission to speak on behalf of the organization. So if one of us comes to the podium and is speaking on behalf of Golden Paradise landowners, we will make every effort to differentiate that official position or that position on behalf of the members of the community, as opposed to speaking on behalf of our own personal interests. Our meetings have been open to the public. They are not just for the members of Golden Paradise landowners. Anyone in the Golden Valley area can come and attend, ask questions. We're just trying to share what knowledge we have, answer questions that we can answer, and try and find answers to questions that we don't have answers for. So I just wanted to say that there is an official Citizens' Action Committee for Golden Valley, and we look forward to working with the Board. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Wayne Hollins. Good morning, Wayne. We need your name and address for the record, and you've got three minutes.
Yes, Wayne Hollins, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. I'd like to speak about the illegal dumping. I know this is, I've heard it's Supervisor Watson, one of his pet projects there, and the problem is I don't see much activity by the county to slow down the dumping, or let alone halt it. I started the cactus cleaners in April of 2015. So far, we've cleaned up over 99,000 pounds of trash and over 3,300 tires, and we're not keeping up. They're dumping faster than we can pick it up. You discussed about having an immediate fine last year in 2015, and we're supposed to look at it again. That was postponed like six times, has not come back up yet. It was supposed to come back up this year. This is the last meeting this year, and it hasn't came up. We, we need some, something that works or have a chance of working. You have ERACE, you don't fund them at a high enough level. Supervisor Watson's questioned their effectiveness, but they're not very effective because they don't have enough people, they don't have enough money to operate at a level they could be effective. The dumpers, they have a better chance of winning the lottery than they do of getting caught dumping out there. And I'm just talking about Golden Valley. I'm not sure what the rest of the counties sees, but that's what I see in Golden Valley. And told Chairman Bishop that we put a lot of Band-Aids on this thing, but we need a major operation. This is not working, what we're doing. And it's partially every one of you guys' fault that it's not, because you're not, we don't have any deterrent in the current ordinance to make it effective. They don't have, they're not worried about getting caught. What are you gonna do? Give me five days to clean it up? We need to do something. My group can't keep up with it. Like I say, they're dumping faster than we can pick it up, and that shouldn't be happening. I would request that you guys do the utmost that you can to, to help us stop these people. A lot of them's coming from Kingman. We don't get too much problem from, from Bullhead City. I guess it's too hard to haul that stuff uphill, but, man, it's disgusting. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hollins. And I'll now close the call to the public, and this is actually a good lead-in for our presentation from Mr. Todd Davidson from ERACE. And Todd's going to be telling us what's gone on to, with the ERACE program, and any deterrents, anything new, any ideas. So we'll turn this over to Mr. Davidson now to give us your presentation. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk a little bit about ERACE's yearly stats and just a brief on our, on our history. So just get right into it here. So almost 15 years ago is when ERACE was first talked about. The Board of Supervisors were looking for a solution to address the dumping problem. Anti-litter ordinance was established, and, and the Public Works Director was actually tasked with developing ERACE. Parks ended up taking the lead in managing ERACE's start. Currently, we have two, we have a coordinator and two detectives is what makes up ERACE, and some goals were actually established to, to kind of get us headed in the right direction. ERACE is mandated for the purpose of mitigating wildcat dumping, the illegal dumping that was just mentioned, also charged with organizing community cleanup events. Another thing that we do is work with several different entities on illegal dump site remediation, and then we also provide some educational sessions as well. In order to, to complete this part of our mission, we established some simple steps for our dump site investigations. Basically, if a generator's identified, that's the person that created the trash, not necessarily the one that dumped it, will issue a five-day notice to get the trash removed. If the dumper is positively identified or witnessed in the dumping, an arrest or a long form could be completed, which would basically be going towards the direction of prosecution. If no suspect is identified, and we don't have the generator that we can give the five-day notice to, then we'll just organize a cleanup with one of our volunteer groups. And so in order to help us complete this investigation process, we do receive some support from other groups. The Sheriff's Office helps with, with dispatch and records and transport of prisoners, if we have that, that need. Public Works helps with road survey, traffic control, identifying boundaries. Developmental Services has flood control, planning and zoning, building inspectors. It helps a lot with our nuisance properties that we'll get calls on. Environmental Health also helps with our nuisance properties. And probation in the prison will help with labor on the larger cleanups. And then we also have volunteers that help quite a bit with providing labor for our larger So with the help of these groups, ERACE does show some benefits, and those benefits include freeing up the Sheriff's Office to handle more priority-type calls. It allows the community to volunteer with some backup from the county, whether it's a dump pass, or it could be us actually picking up the debris that they bag, or us providing tools. We also, another benefit is we, we clean up dump sites on public lands. We reduce the caseload with the county attorney. We increase property values and encourage business development because of that. We do hold those responsible for the littering. Sometimes it might be in the form of them just cleaning it up. Other times, if we have a good suspect, it could be something like actual prison time, jail time, a fine. And we do not take money from the general fund. So here, here's some, here's the actual stats. This is from December of 2014 to November of 2015. We have 353 cases open, 316 cases closed, 248 tons of litter removed, 2,658 tires removed, 25 verbal and five-day notices. We had a prosecution. At that time, the rewards were too new. We didn't have any rewards paid. Cleanup projects, we had 41, and we had nine presentations. And then going to this last year, which is December of 2015 to November of 16, we, we had 350 cases opened, 358 cases closed. We've got over 322 tons of litter removed, 2,992 tires removed, 17 verbal and five-day notices. We had three prosecutions. We had a reward paid, and that reward was actually one that was through the Sheriff's Office, and we just, we assisted with the reward being paid because it was a dumping-type case. The deputy asked for help, and we, we did help them get that reward to the person that gave the information. We had 35 cleanup projects and 17 presentations. We closed almost a case a day this year. That was 42 more than last year. More cases were closed this year than new cases opened. And just to give you an idea of the amount, it would take, for the last two years of trash that we helped remove, it would take almost 81 full-size garbage trucks to remove that same amount of trash. So it's, it's quite a bit. Let's see. And then, and then I have kind of a comparison of the last two years. So the total number of prosecutions was up 200 percent. The number of litter of tons removed is about a 30 percent increase. Total number of cases closed is about a 13 percent increase. The total number of tires removed is about a 13 percent increase. Rewards paid is up, so that's an increase with the one that we had. The total number of cases open is almost the same with a 1 percent decrease. The total number of cleanup projects is about a 15 percent decrease. We had fewer cleanup projects than last year, but we ended up having more trash and tires removed. And then the total number of presentations is about a 22 percent decrease. If we're doing more work out in the field, because there's only three of us to cover all the area, we're gonna have less presentations because we're doing more out there. And the total number of verbal and five-day notices is about a 32 percent decrease, but we did have the prosecutions. And really, the, the verbal and five-day notices is also dependent on the type of evidence we find at the dump site. If we don't have the evidence there, some, some people may continue to dump and just don't leave the, the same evidence that they were caught with before, so we just don't always have that to follow up on. So I do have some visual photographs here that kind of give you an idea of what it looks like, the trash that was removed. So here's some before and afters, and these are all from, from this last year period. So just to give you an idea of what it actually looks like to, to not have the trash there This is a really large one that we had. And then I just wanted to give a special thanks to some of the volunteer groups, like Mojave Silent Witness, that is there to help us with our reward side of it, and also some people that are very involved. Citizens' Action Team in Kingman, they actually helped with one of the prosecutions that we had. Golden Valley Cactus Cleaners has been huge for the, the Golden Valley area and getting things cleaned out there. And then Mead View, I just wanted a special thanks to them because they kind of go above and beyond with picking up litter out there. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. See if the Supervisors have any questions for you, and we'll start with Supervisor Angus. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Watson?
Thank you. Good morning, Todd.
Good morning.
And congratulations on a, on a good report and a good job. It's, it's a huge job. Mojave County is the fifth-largest county in the United States, and for five, for three people to attempt to cover that whole area is just almost impossible. My question to you this morning is, if we were to reduce the number of days from five to one or two, would that be helpful in your program?
We're referring to the five-day notices that we give out?
Yes.
I, I don't think that would necessarily help us. Usually, the people will go out and clean it up before the five-day notice, and then we do have some that start the project before five days and use whatever means they have to get it done. But I, I don't know that changing that timeframe's gonna, gonna necessarily pick up more trash, because usually the ones that we give the five-day notices to, they clean up what, what's out there.
I guess what I'm trying to, to come to is sending a message to those that are, that are out there, that maybe if we toughen it up and knock it down to 24 hours and say, "If you've got 24 hours to clean it up, you're going to jail." And that's kind of the direction that I'm thinking. Is that a good thought pattern or a bad thought pattern?
Well, I think what might actually be more beneficial and what was brought up before is possibly having a, some kind of fine or site that we can issue, maybe along with the five-day notice, or something addition to the five-day notice. Maybe that would, you know, the, the, a lot of the five-day notices are just regular people that end up hiring somebody who took their trash and dumped it in a place they weren't supposed to dump it. So we don't necessarily want to punish those people for doing that. We talk to them about some steps they can take to not, not have those kind of people possibly take their trash out there. But the ones, the ones that maybe we don't have enough for prosecution, but we could give them some kind of, right there, give them some kind of a site or fine that they have to pay, I, I think that could possibly be beneficial. The cleanup timeframe, because of the hours of landfill, I don't want to make it so the people are just taking it back to their house and cleaning up the dump site. I want to be able to have that record that they took it to the landfill. So I think by giving them the five-day notices, if this is something that we find on a Thursday or Friday, it gives them plenty of time, even if they can't make it to the landfill, you know, during the weekend hours that they are open. So that, that's why I, I think the hours, I think the hours are okay for when it's cleaned up, but I think adding something to it, possibly a fine, if we can create something like that, wouldn't be a bad idea.
Thank you for your suggestion, and I would recommend that you go ahead and put something down and, as a recommendation to the entire Board, and I'll certainly be one to sponsor for the agenda. Thank you.
Okay.
Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing to add, no.
Supervisor Moss?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I agree with the Officer and Supervisor Watson that a fine, an immediate fine, to go along with five-day notice, would be better, because the person who's actually doing the dumping, of course, or suspected of doing the dumping is the one we need to hit. But I almost think the problem is so widespread, not just in Golden Valley, but also in my area, that you almost have to treat it like prostitution, where it's not just the dumper, it's also the homeowner who is hiring the dumper. They know they're not licensed contractors, that they're not the, you know, reputable, they're not a business. They're just some guy they hired off the street corner, so they are taking it on faith that he's taking it to the dump, and that's a poor way of doing business, wrecking the desert. And I'd be inclined to actually think about imposing a fine on the homeowner who hired the unlicensed businessperson who's doing the dumping. But I'd leave that to the officer pumped on.
Yeah, possibly adding, if we added the fine to that, that could be something we could look at, especially if it's a homeowner that maybe has done it more than once. But as far as needing somebody licensed to take your trash, I, I don't, I don't know that that's a requirement, but we could certainly, we could certainly give the fine to, to attach them to the five-day notices if that's something that we feel that we should do.
I put it out there as a suggestion, that when you do your, old little Supervisor Watson, that, I'm not suggesting keep the business, but if you're a homeowner and you're hiring some guy off the street, you know you're playing Russian roulette with whether that guy's gonna do something productive with the garbage he's hauling away. So, like taking it to the dump. And especially, as you said, it's a multiple offender, has done it more than once, that person knows what kind of game they're playing. They're part of the problem. So I personally would like to see some potential for finding homeowners, especially repeat offenders.
Sure, we could, we could write that in and see how that looks when we come back.
Okay, when, when I was at the last couple of CSA meetings in Flagstaff and also in Phoenix, I asked some of the other counties of similar size what they have done to prevent criminal littering, and they are experiencing the same frustration as Mojave County is. It's a, it's a statewide problem. It's even a problem in the larger counties like Maricopa County and Pima. I don't know what the answer is. One thing that, that I would be willing to consider is mandatory trash pickup in the higher-density areas, and that's something that I spoke to Supervisor Watson about, and I'd like to continue with that discussion and determine what, what high-density population is and what areas that would affect. But I think, I think the, the low taxes in Mojave County are definitely part of the problem. We, we attract people that, that are low-income, that like Mojave County because we are one of the cheaper places to live in Arizona, but I think also that might add to part of our problem. Coconino County said that they have toyed with transfer stations, and that's been brought up by some of my constituents in Golden Valley. And Coconino County doesn't have the manpower or the money to operate full-time transfer stations, so they man the stations a few hours on certain days, and, and they've discovered that when they, when the employees come back after a lot of time, the trash is just offloaded at the transfer station anyway, and then they have at the transfer station anyway, and then they have the things that shouldn't be dumped that they have to deal with. So Coconino County has closed down their transfer stations, or at least they're in the process of doing that. Another thing that's been brought up by Golden Valley constituents is that they would like to see free dump days. And I know that there is no funding taken out of the general fund to pay for E-RACE and the community cleanups and free dump days at the landfill since it's managed by another company. I don't know if that could even be done, but I'd kind of like to hear your thoughts on those ideas.
Yeah, the transfer station, I agree. What I've seen, it's gonna take, I guess if we ended up with more money, that we could set up a transfer station properly, but I think the biggest issue with that is gonna be receiving, you gotta have people at those stations to receive the goods, because whatever trash arrives may not be things that the landfill's gonna take, so you run into issues there. It's just the cost, because you gotta have all those stations manned and then actually have stations that are set up. So with that, I completely agree with that. As far as making mandatory trash, we've talked about that before within our group, and that would really make a difference. Most of the dumping that we see is out of the areas that are a little more populated, like whether it's like the Butler, Birdland areas, possibly in Golden Valley that have several people on the street. Maybe there is some kind of mandatory trash that could be set up, even if it means that they'd be allowed to do it in whatever way, whatever means they need to do it. Some streets get together and they haul the trash, like one person will haul it in a trailer, so it may not be necessarily a trash truck coming by, but just some kind of mandatory trash. And we have several properties that are managed by a company, that are rented out, that no trash service is required. So the trash just builds up at the property, and there's, other than the nuisance that that creates, there's nothing that says that these people have to have some kind of way of getting the trash off the property. And whether that's done by the owner, the one who's renting out these properties, or the person that's actually renting them, some kind of trash service would certainly cut down on quite a bit of our problem areas, like North Bank Street and some of the areas in Golden Valley. So that, I think, would be probably the best idea out of all of them, but yeah. What was the other idea?
The free dump days at the landfill.
Oh, yeah. So the free dump days, we do our cleanup projects, which is basically a free dump day, and it's even better because where we do them is usually within the community, so they don't even have to drive. Because one of the issues we see are people are having, they don't necessarily have the means to get the trash to the landfill. So whether it's because they're elderly or just don't have the money, don't have a trailer, don't have a vehicle, whatever the reason being, they're not able to actually get, and this is some excuses that we hear when we go and talk to these people. So I think to have it at the landfill, not only do we have the issue that it's managed by another company, and that would create some problems, we'd have to do some special work on making that happen, but they just, they can't get the trash there as their excuse. So that's why we have these community cleanups that are within the actual communities where we're having the problems. And we do these cleanups, we try to do them at least once a year in the real problem areas. I mean, it's possible they could be stepped up, but we're trying not to make it so that this replaces trash service. And the more cleanups I think that we have within these communities, the more they'll just save up their trash and just bring it only to our cleanups, even the people that don't maybe need to do that. So that kind of creates a nuisance on its own. So really, I think us doing the cleanups within the community is probably a good way of getting those items, the larger items that they can't transport, or helping those people that can't get it to the landfill. So I think it may be a combination of things that we need to do, but I think if we did try to do some kind of mandatory trash service, and we continue to do our cleanups at least once a year, I mean, we could probably, I guess we could see if we've got the funding to maybe do it twice a year in some of the real bad areas. But again, I wouldn't suggest doing it more than that, because then we just basically become a transfer station, and then we run into all those issues that the transfer stations have, so.
If we were to eliminate all of the community cleanups and just go to a free dump day, would your budget money then go to pay for these free dump days at the landfill? Because it's being, it's a private company that runs the landfill.
Yeah, if we ended up going that route where they were at the landfill, yeah. And the problem there is, not all of our cleanups are those big community cleanups that we do in those problem areas. Some of our cleanups are just cleanups out in state land. So to take away all that funding, that would mean, a lot of those pictures, the slides that you saw, those wouldn't be cleaned up then, because those are cleanup projects are smaller, but there are cleanup projects as well. So I wouldn't, I don't know that getting rid of all of our community cleanup money just to do that one at the landfill would be a good thing for the environment.
Okay, and then I just wanted to point out for the audience that E-RACE can only do cleanups on public property, is that right? You can't go onto privately-owned property and facilitate a cleanup?
Yeah, correct. And with BLM, we do work with BLM, so sometimes we'll help with BLM property, but we have an agreement with the state that we can go on state land and assist with cleanups on state land, and if it's private property, we'll kind of look at the situation. If we're doing a cleanup in the whole area, and there's no boundaries, no signs, no fences, we may go ahead and do a cleanup, which may touch on some private properties, like along a roadway or whatever, but other than that, we're really not supposed to go on people's private properties and clean it up for them. That would be, you know, we can assist possibly with that if somebody's having a problem getting a job done, but that's about it with that.
Okay, and that's part of the value of the community citizens that go out and clean up, they don't have the restrictions that law enforcement has as far as getting permission to go onto properties and the liabilities that come with that.
Right.
All right, well, I certainly appreciate your presentation, and I would like to see staff look into the mandatory trash pickup in the higher-density areas, and I know that's not a popular thing to do, but, you know, we spent years on this, and it helps, it helps immensely, but like Mr. Wayne Hollis pointed out, he can't keep up with the cleanups that he and his volunteers do, so maybe it's time to help the people make a decision to do the right thing by mandatory trash pickup. And I know there's some legal issues with that, and you'll have to get with the county attorney to find out what those are, but at least let's take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any further comments or questions?
Sure, I will now, Madam Chair, I guess, we've gone on so long.
Supervisor Johnson?
Free this, free that, let's give another free day, there's no consequences, so nobody's ever gonna clean up. If you give them five days to clean up, they clean up and then dump someplace else, and I don't want it to sound like that the only people that are out doing it are the people that might not have the money. Commercial people are dumping out there, business people that are coming out of Kingman are dumping out there. I mean, if we don't put consequences in, we will never stop this. And you can see by your stats that it gets bigger every year and more and more for you to do it. That's all I have. Until we put consequences in, we're never gonna stop this. Is it only Kingman? Well, you guys are the only ones that have the race people up here working that we've caught, so. But I mean, and when you talk about the people, well, we're gonna give them more free days, the people in Kingman, Bullhead, Mojave Valley, Havasu, they all have mandatory trash now, where they're paying for it, you know, so.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Supervisor Moss, go ahead.
I agree with Supervisor Johnson that we should probably wait till Supervisor Watson gets the hold together from E-RACE, but I agree there needs to be more severe consequences, but it is a problem county-wide, not just.
Yes, I agree, it's county-wide and it's statewide, and I agree with Supervisor Johnson, if laws without consequences are basically just good advice.
Yeah, and I want to say that we're not against prosecution either. So, I mean, if we have a case that we can prosecute, we're gonna try to prosecute, and that's why we had three, which was kind of unusual, a little higher, and that might be because of the reward program that brought out more people. But if we can get more witnesses, you know, that'll call in and let us know, the problem is, a lot of these dump sites, for whatever reason, it just doesn't have evidence that leads us to a suspect. Sometimes we'll find out who generated the trash, but not always who dumped it. So it's, we're not against the prosecution, and we agree, and that's why we've been publicizing those that we do have.
Todd, if we eliminated the, I'm sorry, go ahead Supervisor Moss?
I'm sorry. Something I should mention is I had a conversation with the Mojave Indian Tribe roughly a month ago, and they were complaining to me that people are coming off reservation and dumping their trash on tribal land, and they said this should be a concern to the county, because when it comes to working out the right-of-ways with the county, the tribe's gonna take a dim view of it, because they may come to the position that that's just gonna further expand their open areas for more dumping. So it's causing, it's not, like I said, it's not just Golden Valley, it's not just Kingman. People from where, I don't know where they're coming from, but they're dumping all throughout Mojave Valley and Mojave Reservation and elsewhere, so it's a problem that is county-wide, and it does have a impact on our relationship with other government entities.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, the issue's definitely county-wide, and we do see on some of the tribal lands a lot of dumping in a few of their areas there.
Okay, I promise, one last question. If we eliminated the five-day period to clean up the trash, if you've been identified as a litterer, what would that do to your program? Would that help it? Would you have more prosecutions, or would that just let the trash build up?
It would probably let the trash build up. Again, with the five-day notice, that's a tool that we use when we don't necessarily have enough for prosecution, although recently we actually used both. So we used the five-day notice to have the suspects clean up the dump site, and then they were still prosecuted. So it doesn't necessarily, the five-day notice doesn't take away from the prosecution, it just gives us one more tool to get those sites cleaned up, that maybe we don't have enough evidence that that's the suspect that did it, but maybe we've got evidence that it came from a certain business or house, so that's where the five-day notice comes in handy. Most of those five-day notice, or we'll even sometimes do a verbal one, but either way, the threat of that is enough to get somebody out there to get it cleaned up, so that saves on money on cleanups and it gets something cleaned up. And it does make them responsible in a way. I mean, they're not, some of the cleanup sites could be rather expensive for them to clean up, so we had one with some oil on it that they had to work with the state, and that was through a five-day notice, because that's what the state wanted, and that was a large cleanup project, so, you know, that isn't necessarily letting them off the hook. They still have some work to do and spend some money and time to get that job done. But yeah, it's just an additional tool, so I would say us keeping it is probably a good idea.
Madam Chair, I think part of the problem is that when we wanted to put in the reward system, we screwed that up by giving this five-day, "Let them clean it up," because there's a lot of people that are sitting out there, 500 bucks for Christmas, it'd be nice, and if they gotta go out there and be mercenaries and catch these people dumping, I don't think it would bother them a bit, but I think if we went back on our program of the reward system, and, I mean, that stops them pretty quick. Once you know there's somebody out, everybody in the neighborhood's watching you, and they're gonna make 500 bucks if they catch you, and you see the same dump sites a lot of places, so if you sit out there and there's people in this audience that have bought in those trail cams before, I'm sure they'd put them back up there so they could catch the people coming out there, but make some people rich, put some people in jail.
Yeah, I've got no problem with that, and silent witness is very helpful with the reward side of it. If we've got, if there's people out there that see somebody dump, by all means, please call us, and if they give us enough information that we have a prosecution, we will pay out that reward for that, so.
Right, but when you give them the five-day notice, then they don't get a reward, so there's no point.
But we won't give them a five-day notice if we get enough information for prosecution. So in other words, if somebody witnesses the dump site, we're not gonna give that person a five-day notice. The five-day notice is really for those that we don't have enough for prosecution. Now, we might use the five-day notice with prosecution, like we did on some dumpers recently, because we, that way we didn't have to clean up the dump site, so we gave them the five-day notice to clean it up, but they were still prosecuted. So, no, if they give us enough, now, just so people understand, just saying that you saw a gray vehicle out in the desert, which we get a lot of those calls, that's not enough. You know, we have to have some information that we can use for prosecution. So that would mean, at the very least, we need a license plate, you know, things where we can actually identify somebody, or obviously if they know who it is, that's even better. And that's why silent witness is good, because then people don't have to feel like they're putting their lives at risk either if they go through the silent witness program, they don't have to necessarily give all their information, at least right up front, so.
Okay, and I'd like to just close this by saying, those of you that enjoy social media, please keep in mind that if you post a picture of someone dumping trash or any kind of legal activity, you need to contact E-RACE or the Sheriff's Office, because venting on social media or posting a crime that has occurred on social media, it's not an actual report to the authorities, it's only a feel-good thing. So please, you can post all you want on social media, but make sure that the authorities know as well. Thank you very much, Todd.
Thank you.
I appreciate your presentation, and let's look at those things we mentioned. Okay, going on now to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items, unless, of course, a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. So I'll start with Supervisor Angus, do you have anything you would like to see polled? Okay, Supervisor Watson, do you have anything?
Nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson?
Twenty-seven, thirty-two.
Do you have nothing, Madam Chair?
Okay, twenty-seven and thirty-two?
Right, do you have anything to poll, Madam Chair?
It's already been polled. Supervisor Moss?
Oh, sorry.
Supervisor Moss, do you have anything?
Yeah, no, I do not, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent, minus nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twenty-seven, thirty-two, thirty-four. I'll take the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll start out with number nine. Setting as the Board of Directors from Mojave County Flood Control District, approve amendment number four to contract number twelve, PS 21, on-call professional engineering consultants for quality control and materials testing with Western Technologies Incorporated. Supervisor Watson, you asked for this to be polled, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. I have a question for the Flood Control District. If someone from Flood Control will come to the office. Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Question is, for a number of years, Mojave Engineering, I believe, has been a provider of these services, but I don't see them on the agenda today.
Supervisor Watson, I understand Mojave Engineering did not provide those services when they were selected. There are two local firms in Mojave County, only those two provide that service, and then the third one is in Flagstaff. And that contract, that selection was made a few years ago, I think this is a renewal of the contract, and they did not offer it at all.
The two local are AMTI Sunbelt out of Mojave?
Yeah, in fact, we are searching for firms to offer that services, I'd like to have more. Our policy is with the procurement director that I'd like to have at least five firms available, but we could only find three, and two local firms. firms available. But we could only find three, and two local firms were selected.
Okay. Thank you. It's the only question I have.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to have our procurement manager address that. I sent Ms. O'Brien an email, and she responded back to me. And if you could just share that, your comments publicly, I think that would be helpful.
On item number nine, Madam Chair, Supervisors, that's simply an extension of some current contracts. So, that doesn't impact Mojave Electric whatsoever. That was a contract that was awarded back in fiscal year twelve. The contracts under question that relate to Mojave Electric are the new contracts that are on the agenda for award for the on-call surveyor services, as well as the on-call professional civil engineering services. Those were new requests for qualifications that we've just recently finished up the procurement process for. And the top five respondents were, are on the agenda to be awarded contracts today. So, Mojave did respond to those two solicitations. However, they were not one of the top five resultant responses. So, they will not be receiving an award.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. O'Brien?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus?
So, for the companies that get the awards, there are certain specifications, qualifications they have to meet. Do, are there any local firms on that list?
All of the firms that are receiving awards are local to Arizona.
I know they're local, but I mean, local to Mojave County.
There weren't any local Mojave County firms.
Do we give any special consideration to local firms? I know that you have a bit of discretion. I know that they're governed by state laws and statutes. But are there any way we could give special consideration to our local firms?
There is no, there is no way under the procurement laws for the state to provide a local preference.
But you're, it's, I mean, but you're making a decision based on sort of discretionary, you know, ideas and things like that.
Yeah. The subject matter experts review the qualifications that are submitted, and they have to score based on those qualifications. It can't be arbitrary. It has to follow the solicitation guidelines, and based on their experience and expertise with those firms and the services that are going to be required.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because the panel of subject matter experts, are they local here in Mojave County?
Yes. The subject matter experts for these solicitations were Mojave County employees.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No other questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment number four for the contract number twelve, PS dash twenty-one.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Going on to item ten. Has that already been answered by the-
I believe we need to probably go by each item.
Okay. I just wanted to know if I needed to get Becky back up. Okay. Item number ten. Approve a multi-award for contract sixteen, PS dash eleven, on-call surveyor services to Forgensen Associates Incorporated out of Mesquite, Nevada, Michael Baker International Incorporated, Phoenix, Arizona, Rachel Powell and Associates, Phoenix, Arizona, Shepherd Weisner Incorporated, Flagstaff, Wood Patel Associates, Phoenix, for a one-year period commencing upon award with the county having the right at its sole option to renew the contract for up to four additional one-year periods. Okay. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. Now, if you'll call her back up.
Okay. Ms. O'Brien?
Ms. O'Brien, are there no firms in Mojave County that qualify for these contracts?
In Mojave County, there were no firms that scored within the top five that were selected for award.
If your selection went to number six, would a firm from Mojave County be qualified?
For this particular solicitation, there may, I would have had to look for sure, but I believe number six could have been a Kingman or Mojave County vendor. We are limited to only being able to award five, though.
Okay. Thank you. You may want to remain up there for eleven and twelve.
And you're referring to state statute, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything the local contractors or vendors could do to up their scores? I mean, are they aware of what's needed to be awarded in the, or be selected in the top five?
Once we make the awards, we do provide the information of where they scored lower in which areas. So, that would give them indication of concerns and areas in which that they could improve their scores for a subsequent solicitation.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair? Supervisor Angus?
Just for clarification, are there any rules, laws, or ethical provisions about county employees who go work for one of these companies, and they go ahead and get these awards? As I understand it, there may or may not be something like that going on. And I'm not saying, I'm not making any accusations. I just want to know if there are any laws that govern that kind of thing.
There are state laws that specifically prohibit a public employee from participating in a procurement action, and then going to a private company that benefited or saw some financial impact from that award. That's strictly prohibited. They can be prosecuted at the state level.
From that particular award, you're saying?
Yes. Yes.
What about if, you know, a county employee goes to work for a company, and then that company starts getting awards? Is there any period of time? It's, you know, it's like what they talk about in Washington with lobbyists. You know, you can't work for the government and then go work for a company that benefits from it. Is there anything that goes on for, at the local level for that?
There's, and I would have to, I would ask Bill for his input as well. But the state statutes, it tries to be pretty specific to a procurement action. But there's also anything that could be construed as giving a certain vendor an unfair advantage based on knowledge gained through public employment could, you know, would be up for scrutiny that is something-
Right. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Supervisor Moss, go ahead.
Maybe this was answered earlier, and I missed it. But who builds the matrix which results in the scores being developed?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear all of that question.
Yeah. Supervisor Moss, you're a little difficult to hear. If you could speak up just a bit.
Sorry. Who builds the matrix which results in the scores and the award of these contracts?
When we're building the solicitation, we work with the program that we're building the solicitation for to develop the evaluation criteria that's then published in the solicitation.
So, we are the ones that are building the matrix which results in the final scores?
Correct.
We find weight, search values.
Correct. And we issue that in the solicitation so that it is transparent and available for all vendors to see before they respond to a solicitation.
No, I understand that. But when I say we, Mojave County is the actual, the one who's doing the, I'll call it the math formula that results in these scores. It's not the state.
Correct. Yes, it is Mojave County.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Watson?
Having gone through the entire board, I'd like to make a motion for the Flood Control District to approve multi-year award contracts, number sixteen, PS eleven, for on-call services for-
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Going on to item number eleven. This is approve award of contract number sixteen, B dash eleven, Golden Shores Erosion Repair Project to Percol Rock Company out of Utah, in the amount of ninety thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Okay. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Same questions, same folks.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson, this is actually a construction contract. And the laws, and I just want to add to the previous selections, were quality-based selection. That's mandated by statute that we have to select the best quality, just like for, if you go to a doctor, have a surgery, or select an attorney, you go to the best. And that's the law for the county. Now, this contract that you are asking, this is a construction contract. By law, we are restricted to have the design, bid it out, and give it to the lowest bidder, the lowest responsible bidder. And that's what it is. They were just the lowest bidder. This is a construction contract. This is not a professional contract. To number eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. I just want the record to show that Percol Rock Company out of Panquitch, Utah, is the winner of this award for ninety thousand eight eighty-five for the southern portion of Mojave County. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve award of contract number sixteen, B dash eleven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Going on to item number twelve. This will be approve multi-award for contract sixteen, PS twelve, on-call professional civil engineering services to holistic engineering and land management out of Phoenix, and J.E. Fuller Hydrology and Geomothology out of Tempe, Kenley Horn out of Mesa, and Michael Baker International, Phoenix, Shepherd Weisner Incorporated out of Flagstaff, for a one-year period commencing upon award, with the county having the right at its sole option to renew the contracts for up to four additional one-year periods. Okay. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Same players.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson, thank you for the opportunity to clarify some items here. Again, this hiring professional engineers, that's by state statute, like Becky explained, it's a quality-based selection, very similar to doctors or lawyers. Professional engineers must be selected that way. And so, there were twenty-one, twenty-one submittals for that. And according to Becky, we could only select five. So, there was a panel established to do the selection. We have, in Flood Control District, we have four professional engineers. As I remember, they were on the panel. I don't remember exactly. It's not a management decision. It's a panel scoring. The criteria is established, and it's published ahead of time. And the criteria, as I remember, has been pretty much the same since I've been with the county. The criteria such as experience on similar projects, experience and qualifications of the project team, which they, you know, provide subconsultants, and then the firm, you know, their track record, their qualifications, what they can do, and past performance, what they have done for the county. So, that's all taken into account, and that's how it's scored. And then the scores were added up by procurement and based on the votes of the panel. And then the selection was made on quality.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. My question would be, how many Mojave County firms were in the twenty-one applicants?
I don't know. That, I don't know. So, I'm a Becky. Can you answer that?
I can't remember exactly how many Mojave County firms were submitted responses. I do know there was at least one. And, but they didn't receive a score that put them in the top five of the respondents for award.
So, in the matrix, they did not succeed in making it to the top five?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that the record showed that there were no Mojave County firms that were eligible for this contract. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the multi-award contracts, sixteen, PS twelve, for on-call professional civil services engineering.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I understand this processing gets pretty frustrating, especially when one of our local vendors doesn't receive an award. Okay. We'll now go on to item number twenty-seven. Acknowledge receipt of and refer to Public Works for review and recommendation and petition filed pursuant to Mojave County Ordinance 2016-09 to have included in the Mojave County tertiary road maintenance system an approximate .75-mile section of Hayman Drive from Douglas Lane to Diego Road located in the Yucca area. Supervisor Johnson, you asked for this to be polled. So, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Supervisor Watson changed my one to a seven. I wanted to pull twenty-one. But twenty-one and thirty-two that I pulled were just because I believe they should be done during budget time. But I'll make a motion to approve item twenty-seven.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Going on to item number thirty-two. Approve the proposed reorganization of the Assessor's Office, reclassifications of positions and placements of existing employees in the new organizational structure. Supervisor Johnson?
Madam Chair, on this, I just think this should be done during budget time. We're getting, you know, not saying that what they're doing isn't correct, and this won't benefit. But we just keep, every meeting, we come back, doing these reorganizations. There's a lot of departments that don't have enough people in them or available budgets. I don't even know if we could, if the board today could even guess among ourselves how many people we've reorganized this last year. But that's all, that's all I have. I just think it should be something done as a budget.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Angus?
Part of me that agrees with Supervisor Johnson, because it does seem like it's just, you know, rolling in piecework. We did, in all fairness, ask the administration if they can do this. You know, they're having trouble retaining people. And I all believe in, I believe in paying people on their merit and their worth, although that is sort of not the system we're under. And I think they really took that to heart and looked at a way to do that without affecting the budget. And that's what's happening. It just kind of looks bad, because it's rolling in, you know, like Supervisor Johnson said, from meeting to meeting. And I do, when we talked about it, I did assume, like Supervisor Johnson, that it was going to come during the, during the budget process. So, it's, you know, kind of a little unsettling. But I hope when we do do the budget and we see how all this shakes out, that we're going to see what the big savings is. And I do think there will be a savings. So, I'm, I'm sort of not happily accepting this, but I understand it. And again, just actually following what we told them to do.
Actually, my thought on this is, it is being piecemealed. But if we ever get to the point where we have a revenue source where we can do a wage compensation study, I think all of this will play into that and make that, that easier to do, if we ever get to that point. And I hope we do.
Well, we need to have one done at that point. We'll have reorganized each department individually. So, there'll probably be no need for that at that point.
Well, that's true, except you did point out that there's many departments that cannot reorganize.
Exactly. And that's, that's another problem.
And that's, that's certainly not fair. But our good intentions, I think, are in the forefront. So, Mr. Fielder, what do you have to say?
I would ask that the board approve this item as submitted. Basically, the major shift is we're reclassifying our Appraiser Seniors to Appraiser Supervisors. They've been performing supervisory functions for years. It's been a pet project of mine that I had put on the back shelf simply because of the budget constraints over time. But with, with the opportunity to reorganize given to us by the county administrator, we recognize that we had a .8 position, which- by the county administrator, we recognize that we had a .8 position, which to identify the lady was Dorothy Hatton, a longtime employee that made a considerable contribution to our organization. She retired. That position was funded. We elected not to fill that position, so we believe these savings will support the increases that we're asking for our Appraiser Seniors to be reclassified and our Chief Appraiser to be moved up in current step from our 22 to 25. These changes were all reviewed by Human Resources. They concurred, and the documentation I gave you supported the recommendations. They, the, the financial impacts have been reviewed by the Coral Lloyd's Group, and she approves and, and agrees that the savings are real and not just budget numbers. We're at the end of the train, I understand that, because other departments have come to you for reorganizations and you've approved it. I would simply ask that you give us the same courtesy and approve this item as submitted. If you have questions, I'll be happy to respond.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Supervisor Moss.
I just wanted to comment before I put the phone back on mute, that if there are deficiencies that can be realized, cost savings that can be realized, and we can restore some justice in their job performance versus their official titles, I'm all in favor of piecemealing it rather than making people wait. If there's efficiency, so season now, it can always be corrected and modified as this process goes forward. Every organization, the living organization is adapting and changing constantly, and if we stop doing that, it'll stagnate. So I thoroughly approve of the assessor and the other departments have done.
Okay. Mr. Hendrix.
Madam Chairman, thank you. I appreciate Mr. Fielder pointing out certain things. During the course of the year, because of long-term employees retiring or other things that happen within an organization like we experienced in community development, we realized there's opportunities. And if those opportunities aren't taken at a certain time, then we fall back into status quo. When an opportunity arises, it poses an ability for a department to improve their organizational structure. And what I've offered to all elected officials and department heads, that if they can look at their organization, right-size, further right-size their organization, save the county money, and make their changes sustainable, that I will certainly support those measures to the Board of Supervisors across the board, and ask that the boards also, ask also for the board's support. A couple of things that should be asked when these items come before the board is, Mr. Fielder, have you worked with Mojave County Administration and Human Resources to affect these changes? And absolutely you have, and I appreciate your cooperation. And we've looked at your proposal from a Human Resources perspective. We've looked at your proposal from a financial perspective and a sustainability perspective, and we've worked hand-in-hand to bring your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Comments? Supervisor Watson?
Thank you Chairman Bishop. Mr. Fielder, with Mrs. Hatton retiring, do you ever anticipate needing to fulfill that position again?
No, sir.
Ever?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll then entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed reorganization of the Assessor's Office Reclassifications of Positions and Placement of Existing Employees in the New Organizational Structure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Supervisor Moss. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Going on to the last item in the consent agenda, number 34. Approve the submitted plan to increase the pay levels for existing positions on a merit base or pay higher grade levels to new employees to help retain and attract qualified and experienced Treasury personnel. This was pulled by Supervisor Angus, so I'll give you the floor.
Yeah. We have the Treasurer or someone from the office?
Good morning.
Morning. Okay, well, I pulled this because as I read it, unlike the other reorganizations that are taking money from unfilled positions and, you know, being of cost savings, this isn't that.
That is correct.
You are asking for more money, so tell us.
Okay, I would be happy to read my entire justification letter, but I bet you don't want me to do that. I just wanted to go over a couple of things. The first thing that I have to say is, the Arizona Association of Counties came out with a salary and wages compensation package that's all 15 counties, and these are the observations that I made, and this is, I hate to say, Billy down the street has a better bike than me, so I deserve a better bike. That's not what it's about. I don't believe that everybody deserves a red wagon, okay? We, I've spent the last four years reorganizing my office. We've got rid of people who literally answered the phone and were making upwards of 20-some dollars an hour because they had been here for so many years. And not that they were, didn't do the job that they were hired for, and, you know, they had loyalty and everything, but I've gotten rid of, not gotten rid of, either they've retired or moved on or gone to other places within the county because they could make more money there. I've, I don't have that luxury anymore. Reorganization is not an option anymore. And what I'm finding is that all of the things that we want to do that are great, that, you know, I have uncovered stones and found all kinds of spiders and webs and things that we'd like to unwind, and I'll give you a great example of that. In 2014, I came before you and, and told the board that we have about 20,000 delinquent properties that we need to, one by one, go through because they're so old and they shouldn't be on our books, and we need to foreclose on them, the county, and give you some ideas and some scenarios of what you guys, you know, can decide to do with this property if you want to have another clerk board sale or whatever to get this stuff back on the tax rolls. Well, we've continued to do that, and unfortunately, with the turnover rate, the vacancy rate, we're, we're at 10,000 still. So we have another 10,000 to go. That was two years ago. I don't see where I'm going to have the time for anyone to do this stuff if I don't hire qualified employees. Because the things that we're doing now, as, as I said in my justification letter, we have more regulation that we have to follow. I, I need people to be at a higher level, and I think the, the bottom line of what I found, the reoccurring theme that I found in the salaries and wages compensation from Arizona Association of Counties was that we are top-heavy. We have a position for every single position they named, and there are many counties that say NA. I'm not sure what that means if they have other people and they have other names. I'm just looking at it going, why do we have a position, every single one of these positions, we're paying, and we're paying a lot of money for them? And, and I'm kind of like, okay, so how do we, how do we rectify this? I have 14 office administration positions. I have no office, office assistants, I'm sorry. That's office assistants, office assistants too, and office assistant seniors. None of those people are office assistants. They are accounting clerks. The differential is about $10,000 to $15,000 in Mojave County, not looking anywhere else. So if I changed everyone to an accounting clerk, that would be about $210,000. We can't afford that, so I'm looking to find a way to maintain the people that are in my office, continue to be able to recruit and, and maintain, retain the employees that are good in my office. I can't do that. They're being poached by the rest of this county because other departments pay more. That's the reality. It says on, on, under administrative assistant that Mojave County pays an average of $32,000. I do not have one of my office assistants making that much. All of them are under that number. Even my seniors. So that, that's disconcerting to me. I'm, I'm like, okay, well, why can't I hold people? Why are people leaving? Why is this, why do we have, you know, even, even in the paperwork that they published, we have an 18% turnover rate. I think I probably have, I don't know, I'd have to ask Ken, about 50 in my office, my turnover rate. I'm averaging, every person that we get in, one person leaves. I don't know how to deal with that. It costs you money. It does. And I want to, I want to stabilize that, get people in. It takes us about six months to train, about, before people can sit at the window by themselves, answer phones by themselves, give answers that the public is looking for, and about two years for them to fully understand my office. People aren't even staying that long. And, and I literally don't know what to do. So I went through and I said, okay, so what can I do? We haven't been able to hire a Management Analyst Senior because I'm offering $51,000. There's no Management Analyst Senior in this county that makes that money. How do I keep someone? How do I get someone? I have people that are asking for the same position that I already had, we already had in that office, 80, 100, 120,000. I can't even interview them.
Wait, where are these people coming from that they're asking for that kind of money?
The, the only people that were asking for that kind of money were generally out of Kingman, outside of Kingman, somewhere else. A lot of them were in different states because we advertised elsewhere and we spent money to advertise so that we could attract people. I, I have no one that's applied that has a CPA. I have no one that's applied that has the internal audit background. I have no one that's applied unless they're asking for 90 or $100,000 a year.
Cindy, you've come here, there's, this is not the first time you've come, so we, you've done things before.
Yep.
Over the years, but then it's not working. You're saying it's not working?
No, I'm saying it's working to the point of where I can get the people, and I have the, the people that are capable of doing it are about two-thirds of the staff. And two-thirds of the staff are being killed in my office, doing everything, and things are falling through the cracks, and that's the problem. I, I want to, I want to be what, you know, Supervisor Watson described as the best county. We want to be the model. We want to be able to say, we can do this. I don't want someone to come to my window and say, I need to know about this, and for me to say, oh, I'm sorry, that person's on vacation. Come back next week.
Cindy, Mike, is this precedent, I mean, have we done, I don't recall doing this since I've been here, outside the budget, period. Is that something that is, you don't recommend? Is there a specific reason, or is it just a bad precedent? I mean, I'm sure every director would come up here and say that they don't have enough money in their budget, and so I have a bit of a problem just doing it outside the budget. But I know you have problems. I mean, this is not the first time you've been up here.
I'm concerned about service.
I wonder.
I'm concerned about service. We're not going to be able to do the stuff that we do if I continue to have people being poached out of my office, and that's really what's happening. Because you can go anywhere in this county and make more money doing the same thing. Just have a different title.
Mr. Hendrix.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, like I mentioned earlier, for the elected officials and department heads, I offered a pathway, a template for them to be able to right-size their organization and work with HR and administration in preparing a package to place in front of the board so you all can make a business decision. I can't really comment on, on our Treasurer's proposal because that template wasn't utilized in this instance. And what I see is that what's being requested, like I, like I mentioned earlier, there was a couple of questions that should be asked, is when can this, can what's being proposed be done within the existing budget? In this particular instance, we've just heard the answer is no. Two, is it sustainable within the existing budget in this particular proposal? We just heard no. So this is a brand-new proposal. Normally, if it was my, people who work for me, my directors, I would say that you'd have to bring this proposal forward through the budget process and, and handle it in that regard.
Mike, what, the only thing that's concerning, disconcerting to me is, what Cindy's saying is that a similar position for this elected official's office, they make more money in one of your departments. Why would this person do the same thing, doing the same exact thing? Why would they be classified higher in, in Public Works or Development Services? Why would that be? And I, and I understand it. I mean, if I worked there and a job came up and they're making $15,000 more, I'd go for it too. So, I mean, I understand her concern, but why the discrepancy?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, I, I have to take our Treasurer's word for it. I, I don't know of any discrepancy, I haven't, but there could be. I, I'm obviously not, not questioning what Cindy's saying. However, you know, across the board, one of the reasons I've offered the proposal for departments to restructure is there is no monies available in this current budget area unless you pull it from the general fund to do anything extraordinary. And I sincerely believe that the Treasurer's Department isn't the only department that's having difficulties. In fact, if I, if I, if Steve Latauski, our Public Works Director, is truthful, he's got 100% turnover in his road maintenance workers. He's running at least, if I recall, about 30% across the board, and it's impossible for him to fulfill his higher-level engineering positions and so forth and so on. And now I've just taken one of his most valuable engineers from him and asking the board to approve that engineer as our Development Services Director. So we are experiencing difficulties in, in all departments in Mojave County, and you were absolutely correct that some of the things that we're bringing forward right now are Band-Aid approaches, but at least it's holding certain areas together. But with that, that said, you know, to do something greater for the entire county, we need a revenue source, and I've asked our Finance Director to put together all revenue options that may be available to the Board of Supervisors for consideration, whether we move forward with them or not. So at least you all will have options with the budget process to take a look at what our revenue options are for the county and what we may want to do with those if you choose to move forward with any one or, or more of those. So that's coming, you know, and I believe if I didn't provide you with those options, I wouldn't be doing my job as an administrator. So we're going to package that, put it together. One of the components is going to be, that we're going to be asking the board to consider as a class comp study across the board. And like I said, some of those larger items can't even be thought about unless we have, have a revenue stream and are tied directly to that revenue stream.
Another thing Cindy said was that during her research, she found that we were very top-heavy. Do you believe that?
Okay, Madam Chairman, some of the reorgs that are being proposed eliminate those top-level positions, and our department directors and elected officials have recognized that. So if she is top-heavy, she can certainly look at a restructure that would save the county money and then provide, utilize whatever savings she realizes in that restructure to make her department less top-heavy as salary savings for employee increases.
Can I, can I say something about that?
I think you're referring to other departments.
And, and that's, that's actually something I'd like to bring up. And, you know, again, it's not Bobby down the street has a better bike. This is reality. I have to, I have to manage and maintain and run a department, which, you know, we all do. I get that. I'm just coming and letting you know, and I don't want you to fix it. I'm telling you what I need. Here's the reality. By Arizona revised statutes, elected officials, as you all well know, make $63,800. I made $160,000 in the public sector. I have a bachelor's degree, I have an associate's degree, I have a master's degree. I chose this, okay? This was my choice. Is there some differential between what I get paid and what I, this director should be paid if I worked for Mike? Where, where's that money? Can I have that 40, or 50, or 60, or 70,000 to give to my employees? Can I have that forty or fifty or sixty or seventy thousand dollars to give to my employees? No. I don't have a bucket to pull out of. I don't have EBT funds. I don't have permit fees that I can raise. I've talked about raising fees and I've been told I can't because of the Arizona Revised Statutes. So what are we to do? We are not a revenue-generating department. But let me tell you what we do for you. We collect four hundred thousand payments every year, four hundred thousand tax payments every year. We allocate those funds to over eighty different authorities. We collect approximately four hundred million dollars, including non-tax revenues represented by over seventy-five hundred treasurer receipts that we receive now. And I have one person that does treasurer receipts and only treasurer receipts because they're huge and they have skyrocketed in the last two years. So I now have one person that used to do it half-time, now does it full-time. So not only did I lose half a person, but we now have more to process. We have over six thousand treasurer's checks and are issued annually and over sixty thousand warrants written by some fifty-one districts each year that are processed. I'm responsible for safekeeping and investing of several hundred various district funds and currently have over a hundred and fifty million dollars in various investments, mostly held in bonds through custody. How does that not make us the most crucial department? That's, I'm just saying.
If we voted for this fifty thousand, in your estimation, what would the return be?
I believe, first of all, I'm not asking for you to give me fifty thousand dollars that I will spend tomorrow. That's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for fifty thousand dollars so I can reorganize my office because I can't do it under the current pay level. My chief deputy is leaving. He's given his official notice. He earns about ten thousand dollars less than some of the very rural counties. In fact, Pinal County pays a hundred and two thousand and he's making about fifty thousand dollars less than that, forty thousand dollars less than that. So how am I going to get someone? I put the word out, no one wants to apply. I'm not going to get somebody with a CPA. I'm not going to get somebody that spent thirty years in the, you know, private industry. This is what I want, but how do I achieve that? I come to you with a reasonable number that I, you know, I believe you go to the well once. You don't go multiple times. I don't want to waste your time. That's not what this is about. This is about how do I effectively and efficiently run my office? And one of the things I am unable to do is give raises, ever.
Okay. Mike, is this possible to even do?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, absolutely.
It comes out of the general fund?
It would be paid for, we could call our finance, but out of contingency, is that correct? But I did want to make clarification. May I? I thought we did something just recently for the treasurer.
Which thing?
Pardon?
Which thing? What I did was reorganize and give back positions. And that's good, and I'm happy about that. But in the meanwhile, I still don't have, I still can't maintain the level of function. And I think the issue was, well, I went to Ken.
I just wanted to clarify the record that there was, early in the year, shortly after the budget process, we brought something forward from the treasurer's office to provide increases. Then just recently, there was another, which we did discuss during the budget process. And just recently, I think you said that there was a Phase Three or a Phase Two that we brought forward and we provided raises to certain areas that wasn't clearly defined in the budget process, wasn't found in our records. But I think because we're getting old, I'm getting old, I might have forgot everything that actually occurred in the budget process. So we didn't oppose your proposal to give raises across.
Because it was all budget-neutral.
And now this is the.
It was budget-neutral, all of those.
And this is the third request.
Right. Because everything up till now, I've been able to find the money within the budget. Getting rid of people, reorganizing, restructuring. It's just not there anymore. And I'll give you another example, which is disconcerting to me. I don't know, you know, how many people other than elected officials have administrative assistants, secretaries. But I do, and mine is the third lowest paid in this county. And not a little, twenty-eight percent less. It's a lot of money. There's just something wrong with that. When secretaries are paid more than my accountants are, more than my, and I'm not saying that's not okay. What I'm saying is, how do I get, how do I get an accountant to stay an accountant when they can go be a secretary and make ten dollars more an hour? I just, I'm at a loss how I do this.
Ms. Cox, this is obviously all about money. So I'd like to get some input from our finance director, Coral. Ms. Coral Lloyd, maybe you can explain to us about the reorganization last year and then the thing that came up just a couple of months ago that was some kind of a miscommunication about the budget process. And I'd like to know, you know, what are the internal and external comparisons showing? I don't know if you can tell me that or not, but those are some of my questions.
I can affirm that what Mike had just described, the prior year, he'd gone through the budget process for a reorganization that was achieved last fiscal year. And then under the current fiscal year that we're operating under, just a few months ago, I believe that the board authorized the final phase of the three-phase project, if you will, that Cindy was attempting to do to reorganize, reassign, and, you know, really more fully cover the duties that were, in some cases, being, not really being covered or effectively. And some things have come to light as well with audit purposes, to more effectively manage the monies and make sure that the internal controls are safeguarded. From the perspective of the new item, if any amount were approved, then that's going to have to come from contingency at this point. We could certainly offset contingency with any savings by the end of the fiscal year if there's any changes made right now. But at this point, we're not aware of any, that we would have to get your permission to move contingency monies. For comparisons to other counties, I don't have that information. Perhaps HR has looked at those salary studies to do the comparisons. I have not seen those studies. So I'm not able to comment on that.
And how are we setting with our contingency funds?
So for this fiscal year, we're actually setting pretty good. There's been very little use at this point. There've been some activities that have been approved for legal services, but I'm not aware of anything that you have pending that's large. Last year, we had several items that were already ongoing. So this year, we're in pretty good shape. Again, because it's contingency, essentially, we would be replacing the subsequent year with anything that we spend out of it this year. We had reduced contingency in previous years, for example, we had put in five million dollars in the general fund in contingencies. And this past year, we reduced that significantly in order to get the budget balanced and not have any additional revenue impacts at this point.
Okay, and unfunded liabilities, how's that setting for?
Those are terrible. Terrible. We have, last year, we were looking at, just with the public safety retirement of eighteen million, we were funded about, or unfunded about fifty-one, fifty-two percent for that fund. This year, the unfunded liability is rising to twenty million, although the funded portion is improved, but it's huge, as well as the offset cost increases for the subsequent year. So those are terrible. We have unfunded building maintenance items that we're going to have to address, depending on what we do with the jail facility, we have those items, future cost for those. So the, from that perspective, it's, that is definitely looming. And every hundred thousand dollar or fifty thousand dollar increment certainly is going to be impacting all of that together. We would, you know, we're proposing the total package to come together for analysis, compensation, unfunded liabilities, and addressing those annually for compensation. I would estimate that the, if there is a study, if there's not a study, that regardless, there's only so much that you're going to be able to afford to do and address. So whether that comes in addressing compensation changes over, you know, one year at a time or four-year window, a five-year window, something like that will probably be recommended is what I would estimate. There's just, I don't believe that the board would be able to approach all of the issues in one year.
So what I'm hearing then, if we approve the treasurer's request for the fifty thousand dollars, the next year, that would be an automatic, another fifty thousand, it would continue so that she could keep her staff at the pay level that she's requesting.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm just wondering if maybe we need to think about these unfunded liabilities and a revenue source more so than what we have now. So, I don't know, does anybody else have any questions of Ms. Lloyd?
I don't have any questions from Ms. Lloyd. I may have for Ms. Cox.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cunningham here.
Ken Cunningham. Oh, I didn't see him in the back. Yeah, we'd love to hear from him.
I withdraw and let Supervisor Johnson address.
Well, I was just thinking that some of the questions that Chairman Bishop had basically directed at HR, you know, especially with, if you've done any comparisons.
Internal, external?
We're in the middle of doing both. The internal comparisons, what we did is ran for each classification in the treasurer's office and with the county. The office assistant, office assistant two, office assistant senior, within the county, the treasurer's office is either in the middle of the pack or on the higher end of the pack. Because the office assistant two during the reorganization that was approved in May of two thousand, or March of two thousand and fifteen, that position was created specifically for the treasurer's office. So there's only like seven, eight people in that. And so the treasurer's office is the highest group in there because there's only one others in the county. The office assistants, the job descriptions, I know Treasurer Cox, about the accountant. Two years ago, we combined our office assistant positions because the office assistant category with accountant and all the different variations, we're only like one or two sentences off. So we combined job descriptions and classifications to clean up our classification system. I would agree that the admin assistant in the internal comparison, she is the second lowest in the county compared with the other elected admins assistants. The chief deputy currently is the fifth one in the state behind Maricopa, Pima, and Pinal. And then Yuma is at seventy-six thousand, where the chief deputy for Mojave County is at seventy-two thousand. So we're not that far off from Yuma County. But the bigger counties, we are quite a ways different from those. We did the reorganization, like I says, the board approved that in March of two thousand and fifteen. We spent several months doing that. We did it in phases as people left. And then, again, in October, the board approved another raise that went back till August first.
And then also, we added, what, a couple bodies when the OMB went over there? So giving pay raises and additional bodies?
The two OMB positions did go there. Right now, one is vacant and one is being filled, underfilled, I believe. And so they do have those two positions there, but they are correct, they are not filled. Currently, the county has seventy positions that are open right now. That's almost ten percent of our workforce is vacant positions at the moment.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Cunningham? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to speak to Treasurer Cox.
Okay, Supervisor Watson.
Good morning, Ms. Cox.
Good morning, Supervisor Watson.
Ms. Cox, you don't need fifty thousand dollars. You need about two hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct.
I can't in good faith sit here and try to piecemeal your department together. I just had a meeting with my person responsible for twelve hundred miles of roads in Mojave County. He's got one hundred percent turnover in his workforce. One hundred percent. Those people are working for wages that are at the very bottom of the entire fifteen counties of Arizona. I wished I could help you. I feel like I could give you my heart if I could, but Mojave County needs to address its functional revenue structure. Property taxes are the thirteenth lowest in Arizona. Combine that with only one quarter of one percent of the sales tax, we're at the very bottom of taxation in Arizona. If we don't take a good, hard look at our revenue structure in Mojave County, we're going to continue to entertain these problems. So I would suggest that if you get an opportunity to talk to those that you can influence, that maybe looking at a different revenue structure, possibly lowering the property tax and instituting a quarter cent or a half-cent sales tax, that's really going to be our only answer to solve these problems. I wished I could help you, but I can't today. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do have a question, though. One of the things that Mr. Hendricks had brought up several years ago was that if we have found money, okay, just, you know, budget line items, things getting cleaned up, whatever, which has happened in the past, that a percentage of it needed to go to the general fund and a percentage of it could go to the department and you could use it for specific things. I think you had that happen a couple of different times. I know that we had it in our office before I was here. If I find money, can I keep it? For my salaries and wages line? That's the question. I mean, I'm going to go combing through every single thing I possibly can. We've done the cursory view of every single line item. I literally am going to get into the detail if I can keep the money myself, because I don't have anybody in my office that has the time to do it.
Mr. Hendricks, could you respond to that, please?
Absolutely. Like I mentioned previously, you know, what I've offered to all elected officials and directors is if they can, either through restructuring or through additional fees or other things, if they can show that they have a sustainable revenue source and they want to reallocate resources so that they can operate. And you, being an elected official, you have certain mandates on being able to do day-to-day business. So if you come to my office, any director or elected official comes to my office with a plan to be able to do that and to save money and to restructure or reallocate, you know, we'll assist you in packaging that up and bring it in front of the board for a business decision on whether the board wants to move forward with that.
Thanks. Okay. I see no one else wishing to speak. Supervisor Moss, are you good?
I would only have one question. Does Mike Hendricks support this item as our county administrator or does she await to the budget cycle?
Okay, he's at the microphone. I'll let him answer that.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Moss, if I understand that question correctly, on these areas where we restructure, we, I don't, it hasn't been necessary to, and I haven't been taking on that approval myself. I've been packaging the proposal together with the requister and bringing that proposal directly to the board so that you can, you all can decide on that because I think it's better to be transparent and, you know, it's a little beyond what I feel comfortable in doing.
So if I translate your comments, you're taking no position on this particular issue?
On this particular issue, I'm taking no position and not, I'm not providing support for it because it didn't go through the template or the proposal that I offered to the elected officials and boards and department heads.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we do not approve item thirty-four, the submitted Madam Chair, I make a motion that we do not approve item 34, the submitted plan to increase the pay levels for existing positions.
I'll check.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute break, so if you want to get up and stretch your legs, we'll be back in five minutes.
How about ten?
I gotta go and cook. I'm starving. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll convene the meeting. We have all of our supervisors and staff present now. So this is the time we go on to the public hearings. So I'll open up public hearing number 38, Discussion on Possible Action Ray Adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2016-161, approving the petition for addition to the Horizon Six Improvement District located in Lake Havasu area of Mojave County. Mr. Lutowski? This is under your name, so I'll go ahead and let you open up the discussion.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This concerns a petition to expand the Horizon Six Improvement District north of Window Rock Road and just west of Red Rock Road to include 12 parcels, two parcels of which would be Mojave County Flood Control District owned parcels, but the purpose of this would be the interested petitioners do desire to connect and receive service from the Horizon Six Water System at some future date. Any improvements that would be associated with delivering water to those properties, though, would be required to be borne by those residents desiring to connect for water system service. So improvements are not part of this item at this point, the item just considers enlarging the district to encompass the 12 parcels being considered.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Johnson, this is in your area.
Does the public hearing close, ma'am? Chair? We have anybody, nobody else to speak on the public hearing?
I have no one signed up to, to speak, so I will close the, the public hearing part of it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lutowski, you live in the Kingman area, correct?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, correct.
So you have no problem with giving away the Horizon Six Peoples' Water allotment, I see. You realize that that, that isn't a lotment, a Colorado River allotment that Horizon Six has, and the more people we keep expanding on, the less we have. Some of these properties already have wells, are they going to deed those wells over to the county? I assume not. These, these properties are also bordering the city, or some of them are bordering the city, aren't they? I mean, I think that it would be better, and we have problems now with keeping up our water system out there, I think it would be better to have them go to the city than, than have them, you know, stretch out the resources of Horizon Six. That's up to the board.
Okay, do you want to respond to those questions? Or maybe they were more, more like comments?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, moving ahead, should those property owners desire to connect to the Horizon Six Water System, we would certainly look from a technical standpoint of the capacity the system to serve, and most importantly, for this system and its water delivery, namely, being able to maintain adequate pressurization of the system to be able to service those lots.
Well, when, like with them being so close to Havasu, when Havasu or any water district goes outside of its boundaries, they usually charge more money so that any additional strain can be put on it. I mean, that, that's the problem I can see, we keep looking to expand outside, these people had no buy-in when the first system was put in, the people that were there paid for all the infrastructure, all the pumps, the tanks, but that's all just one for the board.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions, comments? Supervisor Moss?
I have no comments, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, then.
Supervisor Johnson, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, do we have a second?
I'll check the motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right. Motion passes, then. Did you get the vote, Jenny? Okay.
To deny.
Madam Chair, if I can ask, what was the vote?
I'll give the board order, give you the numbers.
It was a four to one to deny.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to item number 40. It says, Discussion on Possible Action Ray Approve the Sale of a Two-Acre Partial Owned and Deeded to, or, wait, 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 I think I'm out of line here, did I miss one here? I did skip 39. Okay, item number 39, Discussion on Possible Action Ray Adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2016-153, Rezone of Assessors' Parcel Number 31710002 from Agriculture Residential Five-Acre Minimum Lot Size Zone to General Commercial Five-Acre Minimum Lot Size Zone to Allow an Office and a Water Hall Service in the Dolan Springs vicinity. This is in the area of Seventh Street between Calera and Mineral Road. Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to one. Commissioner Abbott voted against the motion, and then it was continued at the Board of Supervisors' meeting December the 5th. So I do have two people signed up to speak on this item, and this, this is an agenda item, but I'm going to allow the speakers to come up. So I'll, I'll call first Mr. and Ms. Celeste Irons. Good morning, if you could give us your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes.
Celeste Irons, 14482 North Becky Road, Dolan Springs, Arizona. Thank you, Chairman Bishop and Supervisors. I've spoken to you before on this issue, but I have some new concerns. I have a photograph I'd like to show you. Let's see, will that pick it up?
I think I can pay any attention.
My question is, why has a well been drilled when a well and a pump house and a standpipe owned by Gateway Lots already is located across the street? Let's see, how do I do this? The two wells are within 1,000 feet of the sales office, you can see here that- You can see here that there is a tank, and this is a picture of the wellhouse along with the standpipe, and that was already owned by Gateway Lots and was functioning when they drilled the other well that they're asking for the water hall service. And then, on their Facebook page, let's see. I don't think you're going to be able to see this, but I want you to know that there is. It's a Google translation of the Facebook page of Acres Del Sol, and the translation is not particularly good, but it states, "For all the partners of the Ferris Wheel LLC, we are well excited because our land have right to water that well all buyers we have cooperated to become a reality. For more information and details on this project which have cooperated to become a reality, only Acres of Sun can offer, call me at 702-486-1958. It sounds as if the water is exclusively for the use of Ferris Wheel LLC Partners." And Ferris Wheel LLC is a corporation located in Surprise, Arizona, and it shows that the only manager and members are Cynthia L. Matthews. We're also concerned about illegal building that's going on in the area. These are some photographs that will show you illegal buildings of, there we go, of the, of the lots that have been sold by Gateway Lots and Acres Del Sol, all of the lots where there are structures, the structures are illegal and do not have septic tank permits nor building permits. As I told you before, also, the principals and Gateway Acres and Acres Del Sol do not appear to be licensed in Arizona to sell real estate, and that is according to Tim Andert, Public Relations Coordinator, for the Arizona Department of Real Estate and its website. This company continues to operate without a business license, permits for its office locations, or septic tank permits, it's using a porta potty. Once this property is owned commercial, it can be used for any purpose, and the property is located on open range in an agricultural residentially zoned community. Bill Hamilton, owner of Hamilton Ranch, said in a conversation with me that two to three hundred animals are often in that area, so that's where his shipping crails are. I ask that you oppose this rezone, thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. And I did give you a few minutes to carry on, because I know your husband's here, and he could have had a three-minute allotment as well. So, thank you very much, and we'll see if we can answer some of those questions.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kathy Tackett Hicks. Good morning, Kathy. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, and I'll allow you a couple extra minutes.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks, 3751 Martin Gale Drive, Kingman. I'm acting as the owner's agent. Good morning, Honorable Chairmen, Supervisors. This is what I would consider a fairly routine request for a commercial site. There has been some opposition from the woman who was just here, and when I look at that, I see a lot of concerns for her, but not for a land use issue in Mojave County. There were fourteen letters submitted for this item, tenor and support, four in opposition. One is from Bill Hamilton. He owns a grazing lease which runs across all the land in that valley, seven hundred thousand acres. I don't know where Ms. Lois lives, but I believe it's a few miles away from this site. I don't understand all the opposition. What this site does have is power to the site. There are no floodplain issues with it. There was a question last time on why they moved from the existing site, which did have a violation on it, and the difference between the two sites is the first one was not owned by Gateway Lots LLC. They had no ability to completely take care of all the issues that they needed, and this particular site is owned by Gateway Lots LLC, which is wholly owned by Acres Del Sol, just so you know that connection. The site does, is suitable for this use. Staff recommended approval, and so did the commission. Seventh Street is a county-maintained road, and it does have dual access off Ninety-three, which is really a big benefit for any of those locations along Ninety-three because access is limited. Certainly, it's not unique to have a commercial site on a dirt road. Several commercial sites in Dolan Springs, I think Mount Tipton is on a dirt road, which is not county-maintained, so this is a benefit that the county does in fact maintain this. One of the biggest issues there is to support a community. They are Spanish-speaking, a majority of them, as you can tell by that review on their website, but they have received opposition for that, and it is disconcerting for all of them. If you read the letters, tenor and support, they do talk about some of the need for safety and other things where they would like a local location. One of the biggest things for developing that area or anywhere in the Ditrinal Basin as a whole is the ability to have water brought to the site. These owners are doing exactly what we, the county and developers and those that want to develop, want from our people that come into the county, and that's to have a local presence, to follow through, to take care of the roads, and by having that well site there and the ability to get water, they'll be able to grade those roads, which the county allows them to do. Anybody has a right to drill a well. There's nothing unique about that. They do have water on this site. They do want to make it available, and whether or not, I still have to look through some of the legal issues on how you make non-potable water versus potable available to the public, so that's something I still have to get. There are no land use concerns for this. The property owners want to maintain the roads and assist their new people coming in with water to the site and maintain the area. The staff had no concerns with it, the planning and zoning had no concerns with it, and I don't understand the personal issues. There must be more to the backstory on the personal opposition, but in terms of land use and rezone, I ask you please approve this as it's presented. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Kathy, very much. Like I've said before, this area of Dolan Springs is primed for change, and it lacks infrastructure, and I know that this development will help provide some of that infrastructure, but I still have a number of questions, and I think my main concern is that this is being, would be rezoned for a commercial property, and because there's been properties similar to this that have tried to develop out there and have not been successful and then just left abandoned, I have a concern that this commercial property could feasibly not be successful because of the type of land that's out there, it's mostly residential or ranching, and if this fails, is this going to be up for any type of commercial development, which might not be conducive to the area? So, that's where my real concern is, is do we want to rezone in an area where there's no other commercial development at all, and the road coming in is marginal, which would increase the traffic and would require improvements, and whether or not there would be an improvement district formed by the property owners is doubtful at best, so that responsibility would fall back on the county. And, yeah. So, those are some of my concerns.
I think that anybody who invests and wants to rezone for commercial use, there's a risk, an inherent risk, okay? These particular owners already own over a hundred and eighty lots in and around this area, several hundred acres. They already have a vested interest. The goal is to make it more beneficial, obviously, to increase their investment and make it more stable. There's a risk that any commercial venture would fail. I don't see this as any more risky than any other. In fact, I consider it would be more stable because they already have an investment and they have every right and desire to make it work. I don't, what else did you bring up? So, I don't see any more risky. I see that they have a greater desire and a greater inherent responsibility to make it work, and so I don't see that as more risky. This road is suitable. It does have county maintenance, even though it is tertiary, but the county has already, like Mount Tipton Water Company, is on a dirt road that's not county-maintained. So, I feel that this is a step ahead. It already has power. There are no floodplain issues, and the use will be very, there's going to be not a lot of vehicle trips per day because they're not relying on drive-by business, and they're not going to have any here. So, that issue is different, and it's not a convenience store, but it will be a local place for their property owners, of which a majority of them are Spanish-speaking, and they need someone who can help them when they need it in that isolated area.
It almost looks, in looking at the site plan, it almost looks like it's a community center more so than a sales office, and I very much support the water hall business. And I noticed that there's another well just down the road, down Seventh Street on the right, and is that owned by the same developer?
I'm not familiar with it. It very well could be, but if you're going to do water hall and construction, you need a lot of water. I know that they did drill a well on this particular site, and it is a water producer, which is good. I guess, I'm just not sure if it is. It may very well be.
Is there any connection with the Ferris Wheel LLC? Are you familiar with?
I have never heard that name before. I am familiar with Acres Del Sol. I'm familiar with Gateway Lots LLC. And I thought you brought up another issue. I can't recall.
I think one of the things that I brought up was the, and I brought it up before, was the mobile home that was, you said, was stored there temporarily until we got the rezoning issue resolved. When I went by, it was set up permanently, so it shows a little disregard for county ordinance and everything.
Well, clearly, if they did something wrong, or if anyone else built out there, the county needs to give them a citation. There's no free pass with anything at all. I wouldn't support that. I don't support it. So, if they've done something that, if they've jumped the gun, then the county needs to cite them. And if there's any other home out there that doesn't have structures, county needs to cite them. That's, I'm not suggesting anything less than the rules, but in this case, this rezone is appropriate for this site. It does serve the purpose that it needs, and it also prevents all these homeowners from having to continually cross Ninety-three if they want to haul their own water, which is extremely dangerous. So, they want to provide it for their homeowners. I think it's a good use, and in the past, the county has supported that type of onsite location to help with safety and other things, and I would ask you to please do that again.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Tackett Hicks?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. I'm not sure if I've got any comments for Ms. Hicks, but if you'll stand and listen. Normally, I would probably be very much in favor of this item and its legality. I went out to the properties in question and went by the property in question that is seeking the zoning, and then took several hours to tour the area in which they're selling all the lots. And in that tour, I was very disappointed and disgusted to see the amount of trash and rubbish that is accumulating in that area by the new owners, apparently, of these properties. Now, I did take a pair of field glasses. I didn't personally go on each property. I was on a dedicated road. I only witnessed one red tag on one building, but it's obvious to me that the number of properties out there that were being built certainly had no building permit, plans, or proper construction methods. That really concerned me. When I went back down to the office, the advertising was clearly in Spanish, and it appears to me that their target market, obviously, are those folks that probably live in Las Vegas that are Spanish-speaking, that would like to have a piece of property in Mojave County to come and relax on the weekends or whenever they have their time off, which is great, and that's what we want. But, they also need to follow the rules and regulations of Mojave County Planning and Zoning Building Department and all the other rules and regulations. I think the only reason that I, the only way that I could possibly be for this project is if you would talk to your owner, if he would somehow put in a Spanish-speaking document the requirements of following the rules and regulations of Mojave County, and taking an active part in cleaning up those areas that are in quite bad disrepair and literally garbage dumps. I would be willing to give you another couple, I'd be willing to give you another month if you wanted to make that communication with the property owner.
What is it exactly you want? You want a commitment from him, or what is it that you want?
I'd like a commitment from the owner that's selling those lots, that when he sells those lots to those folks that do not speak English or do not understand English, that they have, they have to abide by the rules, regulations of Mojave County Planning and Zoning Building Department and those things. I'm not sure that I'm coming from a legal standpoint at all. I'm just asking that as a suggestion. That would be part and parcel of my approval. As far as it's legal, it's probably not legal to do that, but I'm asking it's a possibility.
Supervisor Watson, the owner needs to give you what is reasonable, and that's a reasonable request. Whether or not it's legal is of no matter to me, because everyone's goal is the same. I guess when I look at some of the structures out there, if they're ten by twelve, they don't require a permit, if they don't have power to them and stuff, and I was aware of one. The picture that I saw, I have no idea if it's on their property, but again, I would say if they've sold it to someone else, then maybe your request to, so that it is Spanish-speaking, that they're made aware of the requirements to develop, I think that's perfectly fine. And I can help them do that by identifying all of that and then have someone translate that into Spanish. But, I'm comfortable with that. And if there's trash out there, they either need to be cited or cleaned it up. I mean, I don't support any of that, if that's in fact the truth. But, what I also don't want is, here's pictures of trash I found out here near our neighbors, and I think it could be yours, okay? So, I'm with you on this, and I can draw that up for you if that's what you need.
And I'd be glad to give you another month.
Oh, dear God.
Another month in order to accomplish this, and I'd make that a motion.
We have a motion on the floor?
I'll check the motion.
Been signed up by Supervisor Moss. Is there any further discussion? CNN will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes three to two. Now, we'll go on to item number forty. Discussion on Possible Action Ray Approve the Sale of a Two-Acre Partial Owned and Deeded to Mojave County as a public-purpose site to the Santa Fe Property Owners Association, Inc., in the amount of ten dollars for purpose of the association developing, operating, and maintaining a public park serving the Santa Fe Ranch Trails community, and further authorize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign a claim deed conveying said property to the association. So, we do have one person signed up to speak on this item, Mr. Ken Works. Give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Ken Works. I'm at P.O. Box 567 Yucca, Arizona. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Santa Fe Ranch Property Owners Association, and the history, as far as I know on that, is that Mike Sawhill, one of the developers, or the main developer that organization, that subdivision, he was kind of forced by the county to turn over a few parcels for the purposes of parks and libraries and such things, and so when he turned over those parcels to the county, he deeded them over to the county with the condition that they would be used for those purposes. So, if you were to take the properties and auction them off or whatever, and make the county a nice profit on it, and it was used for some other purpose, I don't put it past Mike Sawhill that he would sue the county. So, I just want to reiterate that it's, we want to put a helipad out there and a building to park a water supply in, and for in case there's a fire in that area, there's power going to the property, and we want a few picnic tables and some shade out there, and that's about the extent of what we want to do out there right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and...
I have questions, Misses gentlemen.
I have questions, this gentleman.
Okay, Mr. Works.
How many members are in your association, sir?
Well, there's about 3,000 parcels, a little less than 3,000 parcels. And each owner is a member. And I'm guessing that, I don't have the exact number handy, but it's around 2,000, 2,500 in that area, members. They're from all over the world. We have owners from China, all the way from China to France, Belgium, all over the place. And they, some of them come to our annual meetings, and we get about a 200 persons show up at our annual meetings. But that's about the size of the association.
Was this put to a vote of the membership to incur these debts?
No, the, as far as I know, there's no need to put that to the membership's discretion. It's the Board of Directors that govern the membership, that have to make the decisions on what to do with the properties, as far as I know. I'm a novice in this area, because most of this took place about 20 years ago, when all these, when they first started making the subdivisions, developing the subdivision in that area. So I'm only limited in my knowledge of exactly what the legal process is for all of that.
Would you know if you, if your board is able to increase the dues without a vote of the membership?
No, we increased the dues last year with just a vote, a vote of the board. The board decides what the dues are going to be and votes in the increases or the decreases in the dues. Last year, we voted in a $10 a year increase.
Now, you're talking about placing a water tank for firefighting on this site. Where will that water, to that water tank come from?
It would be a well.
There'll be a well and a water tank.
Well, the water tank would be on wheels. It would be mobile, and there would be a structure that it would be in. And it's, as far as I know, the Yucca Fire Department has a spare water, either tank or trailer, that they want to mount it on wheels, that they want to bring out there and store in the area, store on that parcel.
And do you have a budget proposed for this park, how much it's going to cost you yearly?
No, no budgets. First, we have to get possession, and then go from there to decide what to do with it. But there's been no budgetary allocations made through the Treasury or anything like that.
That's the only questions I had. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions, comments?
Madam Chair, if I could, I don't have a question. I do have some comments.
Okay, Supervisor Moss, go ahead.
This is a deed-restricted parcel. We can only use it for certain public activities, like libraries and parks and things like that. The owner, the prior owner who deed-restricted it when he gave it to the county, has consented sending it over to the Santa Fe Ranch homeowners association for their community purposes. It's really an albatross about the county net, because unless we're going to build a park or a library or something, it's just sitting there in government ownership, when it really should be in private ownership. When it comes to this particular issue, it was brought up last month, and we were going to ask Attorney Exstrom as to whether the county could transfer it without an appraiser, appraisal, because in light of the deed restrictions, it would essentially have zero value to the county. And if I read the backup correctly, I believe Mr. Exstrom said could transfer it. I just wanted to get that confirmation from him.
Mr. Exstrom, did you ever find out if we needed an appraisal done on this property?
Madam Chairman, I notified Supervisor Moss and Yvonne Ror, of my opinion, that under, I believe it's 1125156, the board has the authority to transfer this property to this organization. It does, however, require a unanimous vote.
Okay, that being said, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, signify.
I'll make a motion that we approve the sale of the two-acre parcel as laid out in item 40.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, now I can call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, vote is four to one. It takes a unanimous vote, according to our attorney, so there you have it. All right, going on to item number 41. Discussion on Possible Action Ray: Approve the recommendation of the county administrator to appoint Tim Walsh as the Mojave County Development Services Director at Range 31 between steps five and six, or $110,000 annually. All costs associated with the new director's transitional time with the current director will be paid from vacancy savings within the department.
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion to approve has been seconded. Is there any comments anybody would like to make? Okay, all those in favor, signify.
Tim Walsh is a very talented young man, and Mike Hendricks was lucky to get him.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Moss.
Madam Chairman, I would like to point out that Tim's very unique in his, you know, in his qualifications, that he's had seven years in the private sector in land development. And he's also had seven years with Mojave County, providing dedicated service to us through, in public works. And he's currently an engineering manager. One of the most outstanding qualifications that Tim has, outside of being a stand-up, very respectable young man and family man and member of our community and member of Mojave County, he also holds a master's in civil engineering, which is incredible. So he comes with very highly qualified. I've been very proud of his work and his abilities and his service to Mojave County so far. He's proven, and I think he'll be a great addition. And I would appreciate the board allowing me to place him with our existing director, Nick Hunt. I would like to point out that Nick Hunt will be retiring end of January, early February, and he's one of the most talented individuals. And he's been an outstanding member of our team. He's been an outstanding asset to Mojave County for all these years. And I'll say more about him at a later meeting, but he's going to be very, very greatly missed. He's just an outstanding individual. But thank you for letting me say a couple of words.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous support.
Congratulations.
Okay, going on to item number 42. Discussion on Possible Action Ray: Designation of the Mojave County Legislative Policy Committee Member Legislative Liaison for calendar year 2017. Supervisor Watson, you're the outgoing liaison, so you want to carry the wand on this one?
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Yes, for a number of years, I've been the designated LPC representative from Mojave County. And I think it's time that someone else just get involved, broaden their horizon somewhat, lighten my plate a little bit. And with that, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Moss for that position.
Can you further discussion? See, and then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous support. Congratulations, Supervisor Moss.
Madam Chair, if I could comment, with friends like you guys, who needs enemies? Thank you for increasing my workload.
Thank you for taking the load.
Okay, going on to item number 43. Discussion on Possible Action Ray: Review the benefits of purchasing and installing a voting system in board chambers and provide staff with direction moving forward based on quotes received to date. So this is under your name?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus, I'll let you have the floor.
Okay, I brought this up. I've been talking about this for a while with staff. Having gone to other meetings of other councils and boards, I see vote boards where the clerk calls for the vote, and the board members press a button, and there's a board, and it clearly states to the public without, you know, calling for the yays and nays. And I see it as much more professional, you know, so we're not going through this, how many votes do we get? And, you know, sometimes I think that, I'm going to be honest, you know, sometimes it's easy to wait for other people to vote, and, you know, and I think that the public deserves the pure vote of their representative. I just brought it out for discussion. I asked the staff to see what was out there, and I know that there's a lot out there. They brought back a couple of different things. I don't know if this is the best one to go with our system. So discuss. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Rosie Johnson, go ahead.
I brought this up when they first built this building. They should have put one in. But if we do something, it needs to be so that planning and zoning and the commissions who have more members than us, and it's five of us, and then it'll have to be something, I don't know how it would work with call-ins, but we're the only board, I think, that calls in. But P&amp;Z and the other ones need to have, you know, 15 lights or something, I guess. I don't know.
Okay, I went to a city council meeting, and they just recently went to a voting system like this, and I didn't know that they had. And it, once the mayor called for the vote, everybody sat there and they looked lost. And I thought, they don't know how to vote. There's something wrong. The mayor's not helping them. And it took a long, long time for the vote to show up on a screen like that. And then, and then I thought, the votes were up there with the city council member's name, and I think it was a red X for no, and a green X for yes. But the members in the audience that didn't know the council members, wouldn't know who that person was. So if we do go to that, it would, I would recommend that the vote be in front of the person, because not everybody is from the area and knows who the supervisors are or the city councilmen. So that was a big concern of mine. And the time delay, it was uncomfortable. So I don't know what kind of a system we're looking at or what kind of money, but we bitches to your Coral Lloyd, paint us a gloomy picture. So I'm interested to know what cost we're looking at.
Yeah, I'd heard about that from Kingman, that they put a new one, and that there was this time delay. And I'm paying, the ones that I've seen, you know, of course, the old-fashioned ones are usually better, you know, the ones in Bullet City, and maybe even Havasu, there's a board, it has the name, call for the vote, yay, yes, it's green, no, it's red, abstain, it's white. So it's right away. But again, you know, we are now in a world with the, that we have to make it work with our computer system. So that's what I was hoping for. I'm glad to hear the Supervisor Johnson thought about that, you know, want that to happen, because I just think it's a much more professional way of doing things.
Supervisor Watson.
I believe when Supervisor Johnson was identifying that program, it was with flashlights, wasn't it?
Mr. Hendricks, do you have something to add?
Madam Chairman.
Don't call him again.
Madam Chairman, the cost, actually, this RIT director, Nathan McDaniel, he has some information on it, if you'd like to hear. Estimated cost, I believe, is just over $3,100, and it can be operated through our existing audiovisual system. And I think Nathan told me that this particular program isn't hackable by the Russians. Is that correct? But if you'd like to get some more information, we can call Nathan up.
Absolutely, Nathan. If you could describe this to us and give us some details.
Good morning. The proposals you received from us were for two different systems. One was what we call an analog, like dumb system, similar to what, it's basically a light board, is essentially what it is. I believe the proposal that we have is for only five members, so we would have to go back to that vendor and see if they could build us a bigger board to accommodate planning and zoning in the boards that are larger than five members. The other solution we have is an electronic solution. It's called Townvote. And it basically is a little piece of software that we would install onto a computer. And someone would basically describe what you're voting on each time. So what I envisioned was, someone would put Board of Supervisors, the meeting date, and the item number, and then each member would basically have a key clicker that you would press, yes, no, or abstain on. And it, we can basically go to that display on the projectors and show you what the vote is. So we would have to do that for every single item that you essentially vote on. The challenges with that system are, if you attend by phone, obviously, the clicker's not going to work, because the clicker has to be within 150 feet of wherever that software's at. So there's some challenges to using that system when you're attending the meeting remotely. And then, as far as the process of running the meeting, I think it will change, it will change the way we run the meeting a little bit. I think, as Chairman Bishop mentioned, it could slow things down a little bit as far as the flow of the meeting and stuff like that. But it's definitely doable, you know? I think we could try it. It's not crazy expensive. Like Administrator Hendricks mentioned, it's less than $3,000. So we have two proposals. One proposal, I believe, is in the $3,000 price range for the analog solution. And then the electronic solution is in the range of less than 2,000, I think it's 2,000, 2,500, somewhere in there. And it comes with 15 keypad. So the electronic version is pretty much ready for P&amp;Z now, if they were, if they decided to use it. So logistically, I think we could do the electronic one fairly easy.
And it's digital, where you can change the names?
Yeah, it's software. So it's software programmable. Basically, we identify who the voters are, and then we have keypad that go with it.
Did the manufacturer tell you any places that use it now, so we can find out if it's something that is doing well?
I didn't communicate directly with the manufacturer. Procurement was the one that communicated with them, but, so I don't have any information about who used it. But I do know, from some of the research that I did with them, the, I think it was the National Republican Group used it. On their website, they have a screenshot of the keypad with the National Republican Committee's logo on it. And that was something that I was hoping that we could do, if we went with that system, was put our county seal on it and our logo and stuff.
Right. Is there any way of getting a demonstration before? I do worry about it upsetting the flow. I mean, gosh, our meetings go long enough now. Like I said, the analog one goes really immediately. But, so this second one that you're talking about, how would it be for people who are on the phone? They would just, we would just have to ask them?
You would have to verbally vote, or someone would have to be here to press your keypad for you.
Right, right. There's nothing that can do, not, maybe you could start inventing that. Make some money.
Don't get me wrong, there's definitely technology available that allows you to do voting, you know, like using your smartphone and stuff like that. You know, the Townvote software that we looked at, I looked, in the proposal, there was a section that talked about Cloudvote, which I think is a piece of software that they're offering that allows you to do cloud-based voting. So in theory, you could vote from a smartphone or anywhere. One of the fundamental problems I saw with that is, the way they facilitate that is, you upload a PowerPoint presentation. So someone would have to develop a PowerPoint presentation, which essentially would be a script. And then you would have to vote every single item. And the way your meetings are run, you know, they're fairly dynamic. You know, you have a consent agenda, you pull eight different items off the consent. No one's going to be able to know that ahead of time. So the flexibility of doing the Cloudvote and the pre-programmed PowerPoint presentation is somewhat limiting.
You know, we did something at, you talk about the Republican, at the state convention, where we did it from our smartphones. It worked pretty well. I don't know if it's that one that you're talking about.
And like I said, I think that would work fine if the intention was to vote on every single item. But when you have a consent and you choose to pull six out, I think it changes things a little bit.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But if you went, like, down a script, like, we have agendas one through 30, we're going to hit every single one of them, we're going to take a vote on every single one of them, that becomes a lot more easier to deal with.
And so of everything you looked at, these were the two that you thought that?
Those were really the only two that kind of stood out to us, as far as systems that would be feasible.
Nathan, would the vote show in front of the person?
No, with the electronic version, right now, it's a, like I said, it would be a piece of software that's installed on a computer. And we have another piece of software that gets the screen into the AV system, so the votes would show up on the projectors. So, the votes would show up on the projectors, as it is today. That's the most cost-effective way to go as far as the electronic version. And then, the keypad are wireless. So, each person-
Would show up on your, on your monitor here and on the monitor right there. And then, for the audience, on the two large monitors.
That's correct.
And also, I, I don't see that, you know, the, the issue of the consent agenda is insurmountable, you know? We could certainly simplify how it's, you know, our... Ah, I see the clerk shaking her head. Maybe I'm speaking out of school and I'll, I'll go ahead and turn it back to Nathan.
Actually, uh-
I, I think in general, it does, you know, it would, it would change the way we do meetings. It could, it would change the process a little bit. I don't think it's something that we couldn't overcome or, you know, with time, we could figure it out. But, you know, it definitely would change the way we do things and it would, at first, it would definitely be a little bit difficult to get it to be smooth, but-
Do you know the name of the program that Kingman uses? It's not these, right?
The city of Kingman?
Yeah.
I actually do not know what they're using.
We should find out if it is.
I can do that. I can contact them and find out for sure.
Supervisor Watson.
On a recent shopping trip to Home Depot, I found a multicolor LED flashlight that was guaranteed for five years for $25. That might lead to our savings of over $3,000. But I don't want my redneck to be overshadowed by this decision.
I have a question for the clerk of the board. I would like to hear from the clerk. Is, is this something that has been a problem? Are we fixing something that doesn't need fixing? And how will this affect the way that you do your job as the clerk of the board?
Madam Chair, Supervisors, I, I don't think it would change how I do my job. I, I know at times, we do have some confusion on who's a yes or a no, so it could alleviate that. Although, the only problem I do still see is whoever's attending on the phone, which is usually the person who we can't hear, we would still have to find a way to work that out. Either they would have to speak up or we'd have to find another way for someone to enter their vote into the system.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing, I think, I mean, I, I wanted to do it for, you know, it's been, we already own the building, so that's how long ago we thought about this. But I don't know if the rush is there to, to put it in now with budget constraints that we have and it's only $3,000 or whatever the amount of money. But if we did it at budget time, that might give the clerk and, and IT and everybody a chance to look at other systems or see how they work.
I, I can agree with that. I think if we wait and maybe there are other things that we don't know about or we can get a presentation and, and there's no, it's not a big rush. So, I, I would, I would be okay with that.
Yeah. That sounds like a workable solution. Do we need a vote on that or can we just table it indefinitely? Okay, the clerk is nodding her head. We're just going to table this indefinitely and look at it during the budget process. Okay, going on to item number 44, Discussion on Possible Action Ray, the Hall Supreme Court Case Decision Regarding the Elected Officials' Retirement System and the Public Safety Personnel' Retirement System. This is under your name, Supervisor Johnson, so I'll let you have the floor on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, it's an important issue. I'd like, because of time, I'd like to continue it, but it has been put on the agenda and maybe Ms. Lloyd can come forward to give us more information or if, if staff has any information. It was brought up a little bit on a, a previous item. The county owes over $20 million to the deputy sheriffs right now. That's from past and we've made zero payments on that. This new settlement, and it's anybody's guess, I know at CSA, they, they were, they were giving, I think, a four-year window to the judges. They were giving a three-year window. So, nobody's really telling us. They're saying that the amount of money owed to elected officials is anywhere between $10 and $20 million statewide. Ordered to public safety is, I heard, 140 to 200 million. And this comes after supposedly what the legislature did last year to, to solve the problem, which exacerbated the problem. It, it didn't solve it. I've never, I was not, every decision that was made was made by the state legislature. They never asked input from any cities or counties to change retirement systems, to update retirement systems, the funding of retirement systems. But the money's all coming back to the cities and counties to pay it. In my talks to a couple of counties, but mostly cities, they're on the verge of bankruptcy because they can't pay it. I, I believe Maricopa is over a billion dollars and they just went out and bonded for a billion two for a transit system when maybe they should have paid off their, their indebtedness. But, you know, we owe, you know, we can always argue over, over the payments to the, to the public safety or the people that we've, we've taken the money from, but that's not the issue. We promised it to them and we can't expect, especially public safety people, to go without retirement because it's coming from each individual county and city. So, I don't know if you have a better, and I just wanted to kinda bring it forward with the budget coming up to give everybody an idea. So, maybe if you have an idea, Ms. Lloyd, on how much all of them are gonna be or if you have more information that I don't.
I, I think that the information that you just provided is excellent. About the only thing that I could really add is that from the elected, the decision on the Hall case for the elected officials' retirement system, we've been advised right now that the opinion on how those refunds will be made and what will happen are still pending until 2017, sometime during next calendar year. The direction that they've told us to go for this coming budget year is to at least plan to do the same percentage, which is 23.5% for the county's cost. But to expect that to go up all the way past 50%, so over 53.7%, I think, was the actual amount of a what-if scenario. That would be about an $800,000 increase annually, if that's how it plays out to that extent. I think it's all, I hate to come up each time and really be in a negative position, ah, it's terrible. But obviously, there are solutions that we have to work out. It's just going, and the longer the term that we have to work it out, the better financially, if you will. Whether they require us to do a payout over, you know, 15 years to 20 years, it's gonna be a lot more money than if we're allowed 25 to 30 years. And then, of course, the actuaries need to go back and recalculate that. So, those are costs that we're looking at. The PSPRS side for the public safety officials, again, that's over $20 million. Whether we volunteer to put a million dollars into that, whether we agree to put aside another $10,000 per employee over a period of years. Again, that solution that I would anticipate would be somewhere between 25- to 30-year solution to get that funding down to a reasonable amount, amount that's acceptable. But it could be legislative where none of us really do the, agree to pay down any amounts and then it becomes a required contribution. I guess the good, good part of that is that the corp is fully funded right now. We have a lot of turnover. So, we've had a kind of an offside discussion that's fairly amusing that if you have a lot of turnover, your liability is less. But that's clearly, you then have to evaluate what costs us more, turnover or the, the long-term pension. And clearly, turnover, you know, at this point, costs more. But we are looking at a huge liability for both of those systems.
And I guess, one of the problems is if we owe $20 million just to our people in Mojave County, and well, we owe obviously more than that, if we don't give them the $20 million, then it can be invested, we're making the system continue to fail. I mean, if they don't have the money today, we're doing that. And, and for people to understand, the, the state, in their great wisdom, all voted to say, "Okay, we're gonna take more money from the PSPRS and the elected officials have to, have to pay more money into their retirement." Well, you can do that with new people. You can't do it when you have old people with a contract. And, and they knew it. California had legislated it, Oregon had legislated it, but in their wisdom, they're, they're smarter than all those people and they lost that battle. So, now, all that excess money that the, those electeds and PSP, and the public safety people paid in must be given back to them. And then, the county has to make up all that millions of dollars that was taken from those people. It's just short-sightedness. I mean, even in the opinion, you can read it for yourself, the state has done this before with other things where they've taken liberties with funds and the courts would rule against them, but they allowed them to not pay the money back because they knew it could have caused bankruptcy in the state. This time, the court decided not to allow that and they said they had to pay, you know, the money had to be paid back, but they're just trying to pass it on to the counties and cities. That's all I have, just for information. I only let us, let everybody know it was a serious problem we're facing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lloyd.
Thank you.
I just have one comment.
Supervisor Watson.
Supervisor Johnson, I'd just like to thank you for bringing this to light, that this is a true liability to the county and is one of which we should be looking forward to in each and every time we put our budget together. Thank you very much.
Okay, there'll be no action taken on that item, so we'll go on to number 45, Discussion on Possible Action Ray, Adoption of the Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2016-162, Supporting County Supervisors Association Legislative Priorities Established for the 2017 Regular Legislative Session.
Motion approved.
Second the motion?
Motion approved. And a second of all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous approval. Going on to item number 46, Discussion on Possible Action Ray, An Update From the Sheriff's Office Health Department Development Services and Animal Control Regarding Actions Taken At The Rough Facility, To Include All Reports, Photographs, and Actions Taken. Also, Discussion on Possible Action On If An Emergency Situation Exists and Any Action That Is Needed. Now, I do have several people that have signed up to speak on this and I'm going to allow that, but I'm gonna move that to the end of the discussion because many of your questions will be answered by staff as they approach and give us, give us a summary of what's happening and what's going to be happening. So, I'd like to begin with Ms. Patty Mead.
Madam Chair, just point of opposition to that. I place this on the agenda for, for a, a business item. I didn't put it on here for the public to come forward and badmouth somebody or praise somebody. I think this is a decision we should make, but it's your decision. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Patty.
Hang on, I'm waiting there.
Oh, I thought you were electronically voting.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I put together a, a brief timeline to start with and then I have a, a description of the violation and some pictures to accompany what we issued in the notice of violation. On December 7th, Development Services notified our Environmental Health Division that animal control would charge Hillary Ellison with the Rough nonprofit with felony animal cruelty and that there might also be environmental health kennel ordinance violations. On December 8th, staff from Environmental Health Development Services, the Humane Society, and the Sheriff's Department met on-site to inspect the facility. Violations of Mojave County Ordinance 2007, 2008 with regards to sanitation issues only were noted on the complaint inspection report. On December 9th, Mojave County Environmental Health staff returned to the property to issue a formal notice of violation and demand for compliance with a compliance date of 12/12, allowing the staff time to make corrections and to continue finding homes for the more than 300 animals on-site. On December 12th, Mojave County Health Department staff returned to the property, violations were not corrected. Staff then issued a compliance order and an intent to revoke permit for the same violations listed on the NOV. A compliance date of 12/30 was issued in an effort to allow time to comply with sanitation issues and to find homes for the number, the large number of animals. Violation one was Mojave County, and I'll, I'm not gonna go and, I won't read the ordinances per se, you guys can see that on the slide. With that violation, hand washing facilities are supposed to be located in or immediately area to the toilet room and should have hot water, soap, and water and towels. There was none. This travel trailer there is the only facility available for hand washing and in it is a hand sink only with no hot water, soap, or paper towels. This is the violation two. All plumbing fixtures must be properly plumbed and connected to an on-site sewer wastewater system. As you can see here from this picture and these pictures, the plumbing doesn't go to anywhere except the dirt. Violation three, the interior and external kennels in which the animals are kept are to be constructed of durable material and to have bedding sand on the floor for easy cleanup of fecal material. As you can see here, there is just dirt, there is no bedding sand in use, and the kennel areas are difficult to clean. More pictures of the same. Violation four, the animal excrete is to be stored in fly-tight containers and disposed of in accordance with our ordinance. In this picture, you can see multiple bags that are open to flies and the disposal is not coming to pick it up because payment is overdue and it will not be picked up until it is paid. So, there are feces in open bags with flies. Again, more feces all over the ground. Flies swarming everywhere. And then, last, violation five, they're supposed to have a record book in which an entry shall be made immediately of every animal that is received, purchased, sold, boarded, or kept on the premise with an accurate description, including the age, breed, and sex of the animal. And we were not able to find any records for that. Mojave County Health Department only enforces the sanitation issues. We do not enforce anything that has to do with the animals themselves, but in good faith, we did allow them a little bit of extra time to try to find homes and shelters for the 300-plus animals. And we will follow up with inspections to assess compliance.
Okay, thank you, Patty.
I have questions, Madam Chair.
Right, Supervisor Johnson.
Obviously, when you went out there to do these inspections and you saw the condition and, and the animals that needed help, it's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you went beyond your, your duties as a health inspector and offered to find suitable placement of these animals in reputable establishments and that request was denied by the property owner or the business owner.
I believe that we said that we would, the volunteers were trying to find homes and we would allow them extra time to find shelters or homes for the animals. And we came back to the office to see if there was any additional shelters or homes that we were aware of to help with this since we're concerned about the conditions out there.
And was that offer of additional rescues acted upon?
This is the inspector. I'm gonna let her answer.
Sure. Good morning. We did, we had a volunteer on, on site. It wasn't the property owner, so we communicated with her and clearly made our concerns known. And we offered to reach out to other shelters in the area, out of state even, to help coordinate homes for these animals. But she said they weren't interested and they were willing to do that on their own. So, we did offer to help, but they didn't want our help.
Thank you. I just wanted to get the fact that it was-
Could we get your name for the record too, please?
Becky Bramlett. She's an acting environmental health manager and manager supervisor.
And your name?
Becky Bramlett.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Supervisor Angus.
Okay, so, the date that you made the decision to give them the extra time was what date?
The 12th.
The 12th. And you gave until the 30th, so we're kind of in the middle of that. So, what is the status? And who's keeping track of it?
So, as far as the health of the animal goes, we don't have any authority to do so. I did speak to animal control and they're out there often and they're checking up on animals as they're out and about. Our staff will be going back out again this week to see if there's any improvements. But since we gave them compliance until the 30th, unless something becomes an imminent health hazard, we're not gonna force that date.
Right. Right. No, my point is, is anyone keeping track of it? So if they have three hundred animals that they have to place, and they ask for no help from the county, right, they've asked no extra help, since then, people have come forth, and I know that there is, there's a lot of help out there and a lot of resources out there, and I don't know who would, you know, be, would that be us, or would that be the kennel itself? But there's a couple of issues. First, you're dealing with a volunteer when it's not really the volunteer's property, right?
Correct. So we issued the notices to the property owner.
Right.
She was not on-site, so we were just trying to offer assistance to anyone who is there as much as we could.
Understood, but is the property owner now on board with this? I mean, is she, is she cooperating?
She hasn't reached out to us at all to ask for any help, so at this point, it's left at, this is your notice of violation, and this is what needs to come into compliance.
So is anyone going out there and seeing if progress is made?
Not since our last visit, so our next visit isn't scheduled until the thirtieth, but we can clearly go out there sooner than that.
Yeah, I mean, the thirtieth is the day theoretically, they're all supposed to be housed or taken off property, so if you go in there and there's, on the thirtieth, and there are three hundred animals there, we're basically starting from scratch.
Actually, on the thirtieth, our concern is only that the sanitation issues are corrected by that day. So we can't take those animals off the property or do anything with them. That would have to be through animal control to remove, to remove animals, so we can't place those for them.
Well, we're, okay, so the sheriff is involved in this?
Correct. So all we can do is enforce the sanitation issues on the property.
Okay. Okay, so you gave until the thirtieth to fix the sanitation issues. So how the three hundred dogs and getting them placed, how did that come into your department?
We wanted to make sure that they were able to have time to either come in compliance or find homes for those animals. We didn't want to go out there and revoke a permit within twenty-four hours and have them stranded with all these animals and no homes for them. So we're looking at our sanitation issues, the health risks involved, and also trying to find solutions for them.
I'm just trying to figure out who's doing what, but wouldn't that be the sheriff's call to make that decision about where, you know, where the animals go?
Yeah, yeah. We just wanted to help them find time to find those animals homes.
All right, that brings up a whole lot of questions, but I'll...
Okay, so basically, we, the sanitation issues, we didn't feel like were an imminent health threat right then, and we gave them some additional time to find homes for the animals. The animals are, have nothing to do with our ordinance or our ability, we're just giving them, we usually give time to people to improve the sanitation issues before we end up in court with them. So that's what we're doing here, is we're allowing time to improve those sanitation issues. The animals is a separate thing, but we were concerned about over three hundred animals being left without a home if we, if we gave a twenty-four issue, issue of violation, notice of violation.
I guess I'm not, I'm not worried about it. So was the sheriff involved at that?
Was the sheriff involved at that same time? Because it seems like they have to go hand in hand. If, you know, you're just can do the sanitation part of it, but yet you're sort of negotiating where these animals are going to go. Well, but you just said that...
Apparently, and you'll have to ask the Sheriff's Department, I don't believe they can just place those animals until they have the authority to do so. They did remove the ones that they found were endangered, from what we understand.
Were their animals taken off immediately? Any animals?
I believe there were ill animals that were removed immediately.
Well, I guess, I guess the next questions are for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, thank you, Patty.
And, and just for, we did ask the Sheriff's Department, we, we let the Sheriff's Department know of the item on the agenda, and the information back from the Sheriff's Office, it was that they're in the middle of conducting an investigation, and they can't comment on, can't provide comment at today's board meeting. But I've got, there was another component of, at least county administration that was involved, that's Development Services, and I've got Nick Hunt here, if you want an update from him.
Yeah, I would like to hear from Mr. Hunt, and perhaps you can tell us more about the mobile home that was condemned, and what's going on with, with that portion of PNC.
That's right. Madam Chair, Development Services administers the building code, and the building official has a duty to declare an unsafe building uninhabitable, and so the building official was called by the Sheriff's Office to, to look at the mobile home on the site, and two building inspectors, building officials accompanied the, the sheriff deputies, and did an inspection of the mobile home, and they found unsafe conditions, which included electrical, exposed electrical wiring, inoperative smoke detectors, damaged wallboard, structural framing that was damaged and chewed up by the animals, and the wallboard was chewed up part of it, and then animal feces all over and unsanitary conditions. So they declared the, the building unsafe to protect the, and that's the only choice they really have. And I have pictures if I like to go through and show the board the basis for the decision for the building official. And so the, there should be no storage, that's an unsafe condition on the porch. This is inside the building, and several animals lived inside the building and without food or water. It's in the kitchen, that's in a dining room, dining room looked just like that. And this is the bedroom, you know, covered with animal feces, and again, the kitchen and the dining room area. And this is the bathroom, and I just want to point out that the tub is not usable, it's kind of built in. And this is a wallboard that was chewed away by an animal, and exposed electrical wiring. Again, a wallboard, structural damages that have been chewed by animals. And then again, more electrical wiring and feces on the floor. And again, missing wallboard again, and this is how the room looked like no flooring. Now, this is outside the house, and just to collaborate what Patty showed before, and missing, missing piping, water pipes, and then these are just the outside runs for the dogs. Now, the chief building official is here with me if you have any questions to him, but I agree with him, he, he had basically no option but to declare the building unsafe. And that's where we are right now. There's another ordinance, I just want to clarify to the board that there are three ordinances that regulate kennels, and this is a permitted kennel. And the Sheriff's Office, the animal, animal control division of the Sheriff's Office, they administer their own ordinance, and it's pretty much in line with state statutes. And then the Health Department has the health ordinance for the kennel that Patty addressed here. And then the third ordinance is the zoning ordinance for a kennel that, that goes through the Planning Zoning Commission, and, but the zoning ordinance is, is taking, you know, a backseat on it because the sheriff is doing an investigation, and also, as you heard, the Health Department issued violation. So if those are found true, then, then Development Services will have no choice but come to the board and ask to revoke the kennel permit for, for zoning, too. But we're kind of taking a backseat right now, waiting until those investigations work out.
The structure we saw, that was the house, and that house now is condemned. And so what does that mean? Is it boarded up? Can, can the owner not go in it? And who oversees that? Like, what, what happens if, I'm just curious myself, I'm sure maybe others are...
Yeah, it's, it's, it's under the building code that was adopted by the board and the property maintenance code, that in an unsafe condition to protect the public, you put a red tag on the building. It's unsafe for human occupancy, and that's what happened. Now, most of the time, they can repair the damages, it's up to the owner. In this case, it's very unlikely that they'll be able to repair it because there's such an extensive amount of damage on it, and so we doubt that they can repair it, but we are open to any other option.
Is the owner allowed into the home?
Well, our inspectors went with the sheriff deputies.
I'm sorry.
They went with the sheriff deputies. They were asked by the sheriff deputies to accompany them to do the inspection.
Okay. So I think the question was, can the owner go back into the residence now that it's been condemned and red-tagged?
Yeah, if, if the owner wants to, you know, repair everything and rebuild it, she can certainly do that, and we'll, we will do an inspection and make sure it's, it's put back in a safe condition. However, as you saw, the amount of damage, it's, it's just my opinion, it's unlikely that it will be able to repair it in a cost-effective manner.
So she can't go back into it as a resident? She can't go back and live in it?
Well, she can go back, but she can't live in it.
But who, who enforces that?
Well, the owner can certainly repair it, but, you know, there's unsafe conditions like the wiring that can cause fire and can...
And I think the enforcement would be our, our inspectors, prompted by citizen complaints that, you know, maybe somebody's back in, living in the residence. Is that correct?
Right. The order to take off this red tag would, you know, the repairs had to be made, and then our inspectors would, they had to request an inspection, and our inspectors would do the inspection.
But the, and the animals that were in the house, because I heard some conflicting source, so the animals that were in the house, they were taken away?
Yeah, the, my understanding, the sheriff deputies took the lead, and so they removed several animals, actually quite a few. They were living in the house, and again, I can't comment on the sheriff's investigation, but there were concerns that there were no food and drink for those animals.
And, and Mike, there was nothing that the sheriff could tell us today. They just said, we're not going to come and comment.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Angus, that was what my email from the Sheriff's Office said, basically.
Okay.
If it's an active investigation, I don't believe they, they can comment or it might compromise the investigation. But we do have the vice president of, acting manager of Ruff here today that'll be speaking. She's put in a request to speak, so she can answer a lot of those questions.
I have a question of Mr. Hunt, may I?
Okay.
Mr. Hunt, when you condemned the building, or when your people condemned it, obviously it wasn't fit for animals to live in either, so those animals were all removed from that location. There's no animals inside?
Yes, that is my understanding, that the sheriff deputies removed those animals, and some of them were in really bad shape, actually, that...
Right, they had to go to, go to hospital. That's all, thank you. Maybe before you call somebody else up, I'd like to, if I, not, not of you, Mr. Hunt, if IT could put up a, kind of a roll the list of problems we've had, because this predates, I even believe, Supervisor Watson, and the tens of thou, these are just the times of staff time that we've been out there, from two thousand two or three, I believe, tens of thousands of dollars we've spent. And I have to give the court some of the blame, because we ended up in the court, and the court allowed, allowed this facility to go without the same regulations as other facilities did. This has really been a thorn in the side, and people support it because they love animals, but there comes a time when, you know, it can't be supported on donations alone. I guess if you want to have some other people come up and talk, it's your choice now.
I'm, I'm still watching the, the list of violations.
It's...
It's absolutely amazing, and it predates me and some of the other supervisors, so should the county decide to, to take the kennel license away, would that be at the recommendation of the Sheriff's Office?
Madam Chair, it's in our ordinance, and I believe it's in state statute also, that if, if, if there is a, either health violation, or, or the sheriff deputy finds some animal cruelty or some other, and then the board has no choice but to revoke the, the kennel license. And so that's why I said that we're waiting for those investigations to be completed, and then we'll make a recommendation to the board based on the findings.
Okay, thank you. And then...
I guess my question is, I'm still, I, I'm sorry, I'm still very confused, because I, all right, I understand they can't comment on the investigation, but the authority to tell them to, that they had to, did they volunteer willingly to give the animals up? But that was the volunteer. Do we know that that's happening? So on, like, on December thirtieth, you know, are we in the same place, or do we have to...
Madam Chairman, may I try to, try to answer that question?
I wish you would, yes.
The Health Director can certainly correct me if I, I make a mistake, but basically, what the Health Director did is issue them a notice of violation and give them till the thirtieth to correct or to be closed down. So on the thirtieth, what at least administration staff, the Health Director intends to do is have her staff go out and view the property and see if the violations have been corrected, and if they have been corrected, then they would continue business as usual, with the exception of the building, which is, has been red-tagged. In reading the minor, it's my understanding, from at least reading the paper, that the Ruff believes that they can get that facility back into operating condition and abate the violations. Whether they do or not is, is, we're going to be able to tell on the thirtieth, but the reason, I guess, Ruff, and we can ask the Ruff Vice President, the reason Ruff continues to operate, and they continue to, to charge, and they continue to either adopt out or not adopt out, but they're continuing business as usual, because I believe the, the proprietor believes that they're going to be in compliance on the thirtieth. So there hasn't been a, an effort to place, place, or, it's my understanding, there hasn't been an effort to place the animals.
Maybe I could ask the administrator or the manager, how many conversations has the sheriff, the Health Department, Public Works had with the lady who runs Ruff?
And no disrespect, I don't intend to have a conversation with her. I don't know, can the Health Department answer that?
I believe the answer is zero. I just wanted to make that out there. Any, any contact that we, that has been tried to have been made has been ignored.
Madam Chair, does this board have the ability right now, today, to pull this kennel license?
I think we've, we have an agreement right now. The notice of violation has given them until December the thirtieth. I think at that point, then the board would, would have that authority, or Patty Mead would have that authority.
One of the things, Madam Chairman, we ask our attorney's office what our options were in regard to this kennel. At least at this time, unless we get direction from the Board of Supervisors, we intend to carry out our inspection on the thirtieth, and then make a decision on whether they're still in violation. Now, the attorney's office, it's my understanding, stated that the county has the authority to rescind that order, and we could take immediate action against, against the kennel if the board so directed.
Okay, and I, I went out and visited Ruff unannounced on the twentieth, and at that time, there were volunteers there, the dogs had water, they were being fed at the time I was there. I spent about an hour at the Ruff facility on the twentieth.
Last month?
Yes, last, last Tuesday, and...
No, 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 twentieth, it says the nineteenth.
Last Tuesday, whenever that was.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Last Tuesday, I was out there, and, and I didn't see any, any animals, dogs or cats, that needed immediate attention. They, they all looked like they were being cared for, maybe not in the manner that I would care for my own personal dog. I mean, there were... I mean, there were some atrocities out there as far as grooming. I only saw one injury on a dog, and it was a little tiny injury on a knee. I saw no reason to take immediate action. And if these animals can be adopted out between now and the 30th, I think that's good for the animals. And on the 30th, if there's any there at that time and we revoke the kennel license, I think then the sheriff's office animal control would step in and...
But that's my confusion. I'm hearing that they're going to be adopting them out, but then I'm hearing that all they're trying to do is come up into compliance with these sanitation complaints and that they're going to go on business as usual. So I'm hearing two different stories. That's what my confusion is.
That's a problem with social media. I've been reading that, too, and you just don't know what's true and what's not.
Well, no, it's not just social media. I mean, I've spoken to the health department. So which one is it? Is it just the 30th to adopt out the animals or the 30th to just come up to compliance?
To come up to compliance, but at the same time, hopefully those animals will be adopted and we won't have 300 animals with no place to go.
Who told you that they were going to try adopting them out?
The assistant director, the person that's going to talk to Ruff, about Ruff. Ms. Allison was in the hospital the days we were out there.
Okay. If there's no further questions, then I'm going to allow the audience to come up and speak. And if there's anybody that's a member of a group that can speak collectively together, otherwise, we're going to be here for quite a long length of time. And I think you all are going to be saying similar things, so if you can group your members together, we certainly would appreciate it. But I'll start out calling Christine Anderson, whom I believe is the vice president of Ruff and currently in charge while Ms. Allison is recuperating.
I have a question of the speaker before she starts. Madam Chair, if I may.
Okay. And Christine, if you could give us your name and address, just for the record, and then...
Yeah, it's Christine Anderson. I live on Ship Drive in Golden Valley. I keep the house address private due to I am a sanctuary that's separate from Ruff, but we do take in animals for people, so we keep our house address private, if that makes any sense.
So this address is another sanctuary or another rescue?
Yes, another rescue, separate from Ruff, though.
Okay.
I guess my question is, you're the vice president of what kind of organization?
Actually, that's the only thing I want to address. There is a correction here. I am actually now current president. Hillary has stepped down. So I want to make that clear.
What kind of organization? Is this a 501(c)(3) or you filed with the corporation commission as a business?
Ruff, from my understanding, is no longer 501(c)(3) on therein. We do work under another corporation. But on that end, Ruff is no longer itself 501.
Hasn't been for a numerous amount of years. So what is Ruff? It's just you got a piece of paper that says there's an organization and you're... I mean, is anything filed with the state, with the federal government, with anybody at all?
There is a corporation filed with the state that I know of, but I think outside the federal government-wise, there's nothing filed with them.
Yeah. And I'm not picking on you or anything. I'm just saying that I don't believe there's any such corporation that's been actively working or pursuing anything, you know? And now, and I'm sure this lady has the best intentions with her other nonprofit, but it's the nonprofit we're dealing with right now. I don't know. That's all. Thank you, madam.
Okay, Christine. You've got three minutes beginning now.
Okay. Let's... Everybody knows Hillary has stepped down due to health conditions and health concerns. She was just released from the hospital last Saturday, if I remember correctly. And since then, her health has been kind of a little wavy. And due to health, she stepped down. I moved up from vice president up to president. As people have said, the animals are still being taken care of. We are still conducting business as normal. We are no longer taking animals in. We've had several calls of people asking if we can take a dog in or things like that, and we have denied that. And we've sent them to different organizations that could take or help with those dogs at this time. Since Hillary has been in the hospital, I have stepped into her shoes, basically, and took over the day-to-day operations. We have... At the time when I stepped in, like I said, we had roughly 170 dogs, give or take a few on the property at the time. Since then, we have adopted 40 dogs so far. I have at least 10 more adoptions pending. The reason they're pending is they're coming from out of the area to come see the dogs and to file the adoption application at this time. There was a question regarding livestock on the property. They were removed and are at another sanctuary at this time. And Hillary has agreed that we'll try to get them adopted out and will not be returning to the property until we do bring it to code and things in that order. Because I did just step in the position and I have been working with Hillary trying to get this place up to code. Now, I do understand we have until the 30th. I would like to see if we can get just a couple more weeks' extension on that. The only reason I ask for that extension is, one, to finish raising funds that's needed to work on the sanctuary compliances. We do have hand washing stations coming in. Those should be in this week, I'm hoping. It's all depending on shipping right now. It's the owners are waiting on that. I think it's... I think for now, so...
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have some questions, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
You're now in charge of the books?
Yes.
How much do you know just roughly is in outstanding debts? I understand trash hasn't been paid, hauling and...
Actually, trash was paid not... It was paid... I want to say it was last Tuesday or Tuesday before. Right after Hillary went into the hospital, it was paid and brought to current. And the trash has been picked up and all that's been cleaned up at this time.
All right. While taking over, I'm guessing the land is in the name of Ms. Allison, not in the name of Ruff?
No, it's in Ms. Allison's name, correct.
So basically, is there a lease with Ruff to stay there if this was something that continued?
That's what we do have in standing. She kind of divided the property up. Where the kennels are is the Ruff sanctuary, and then there's her house on the other half of it.
Okay. Did all the private animals that were in the structure of the house that's condemned, have those gone to you and Ruff?
Actually, from my understanding, those are actually still in custody with the county, and Ms. Allison is working on that area.
It has been brought up that possibly some animals have been moved to another location where Ms. Allison's at, that she's starting another kennel. Do you know anything about that?
No, that is false. The only... Besides the dogs and cats that we have been adopted out, the only animals that have been removed from the property are the livestock, which are the pigs and goats. And the pigs were sent to a sanctuary, and the goats were sent to a friend of hers pending adoption.
Now, were those animals permitted under the permit, pigs?
Under the permit, I am not positive on that, but the livestock area was her personal area.
What kind of a yearly budget does Ruff have?
Yearly budget, when it... Sorry, I'm trying to remember these things in my head right now. Our budget kind of varies. We say it varies due to weather around here. Normally, on like water budget, we budget $500 a month for our water. And our food budget can be anywhere, and they're getting depending on if we adopt dogs out, if we get any dogs in, our food budget could be anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000. So... And then there's maintenance and things like that and vet bills. Our budget can vary anywhere from like the $5,000 to $8,000, depending. And each month, we do piece by piece, depending on what we have remaining in our budget, to vary from bills.
Thank you. That's the only question I have, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Watson.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming and testifying today. I just have one question. What are the yearly revenues for Ruff?
Yearly revenues? We actually don't have a set revenue because we don't sell any animals, but we...
Income?
That's what I'm saying. Our income can vary. I mean, one month, we may not have any income, so I can't really give a flat-out number on that.
Can you give me last year's income?
Last year's, between donations and the fundraisers we had, we're right around the $12,000 mark.
You're feeding 250 to 300 animals on $12,000?
I'm saying donation-wise, that's what we had come in. I'm not counting what's coming out of our personal pockets to feed animals.
That's what I'm counting. I want to know what the total revenue for Ruff is.
Okay. What I can say is, between everybody's donating, between everybody taking stuff out of their pocket, we have about $800 a month, is what it is. And there's five of us.
Okay. I want to make sure I've got this straight. How many animals are on the premises today?
As of right now, we have 128 dogs and around 70 cats. The only reason I say around on the cats is because they move and we can't isolate our numbers on that one.
So roughly 200 animals?
Yeah.
And you're feeding 200 animals with $800 a month?
Yep.
That's answered my question. Thank you.
Supervisor Moss, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you very much to the speakers. I've got a lot of information I didn't have previously. Thank you.
Okay. I've got a couple more questions. The sanctuary where you've taken some of the animals to, what's the name of that sanctuary?
The pigs went to Thunderfoot Ranch.
And where is that?
That's actually my location.
That's on...
Ship.
Ship? Okay. And what animals were taken there?
Just the livestock, the three goats and the pigs.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you. Our next baker is Brenda Fury. And I put these in alphabetically, so after Brenda will be Keith Green and followed by Sally Greensill and then Carmen Johnson. So if you can kind of work your way down to the front, maybe that'll save us a little time.
My name is Brenda Fury. I live in Fort Mojave. I'm sort of feeling a sense of déjà vu.
Do you need the actual address, Jenny?
I'm on Iroquois Loop. It's my private sanctuary, so for me, no pets, just me. So I'd rather not give the address.
You're not willing to give us the address?
Not the house number, no. For reprisal, there seems to be some discord, so...
Is it the address you have on this form?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make an exception based on...
I gave it to you guys.
All right. You've got three minutes.
I'm just curious why we keep revisiting and revisiting and revisiting and revisiting this same issue with this same person over and over again. There are so many people in this county who want to help, but our hands are tied without you guys doing something. And so I'm frustrated. I went and read the Mojave County ordinances, 2010-12 that Buster signed, and there's not supposed to be any chaining of animals on a kennel. And there's what I term a Walmart greeter who is chained when you walk on that facility. He supposedly cannot be contained outside of anything of a concrete block wall. So he climbs chain-linked fences, so they chain him. He does have a doghouse nearby, but he has... He just wanders right there. It also says in that same statute that 15 minutes each day per animal for feeding, water, and cleaning and sanitizing of the housings and floors for each kennel is required. That's 15 minutes per animals times 200 animals equals 50 hours a day. And if you count an eight-hour workday, that's going to require six and a quarter people to work every single day to properly maintain that facility. If you make it 16 hours, you're still looking at over three people a day, and she struggles to keep volunteers. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Keith Green, followed by Sally Greensill. If you can work your way down, Sally.
Yep. My name's Keith Green. I live at 532 South Emery Park, Golden Valley. I don't disagree with her, but the dog's name is Bud. I've been there a number of times. He's a big old dog. He hasn't changed friendly, knock you down. That's beside the point. I'm not here. I've known Hillary for about 10 years. I don't dispute anything that people have said. I've been there. My wife and I have spent hundreds of hours, primarily her doing cleanup, the dog food and all that stuff. I don't do that. I'll bring her food, and I continue to do that until, you know, you get the place taken care of. I actually took a dog from her in August, little puppy. Anybody knows about puppies? They're pests and they're irritable, but you don't give them up. Also got a dog from the Humane Society. He'll be two. Got him from there. Got him, he had kennel cough, took care of that. Got pneumonia, took care of that. Now I found out he has valley fever. Will take care of that till he dies, if we have to. But I'm here for the rest of the animals. You're going to do what you're going to do. But I want you to think about those animals like they're in a nursing home. I've seen my mother in a nursing home, and she died there. And I know you're going to try and place a lot of those dogs, but you're not going to place them all. There's just no way, because a lot of them are old. And you know what happens when we get old? You forget about them. And the only good thing about her, at least she doesn't kill them. But things need to be changed. And I just want you to be concerned about those who aren't going to get adopted, because they're going to be... She's got 130? Probably most of them won't be adopted. So what are you going to do with them? You're going to kill them. Before you do that, please do what you can not to do that. They didn't... They didn't ask to be there, they just are there. So please, look out for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greensill? Need your name and address for the record?
I'm Sally Greensill, P.O. Box 1213, Kingman. I requested the incident report from the sheriff's office about what happened on December 6th, 7th, and 8th, and they said it's not ready yet, but I did get a copy of the press release. You were asking about what happened to some of the dogs. A female dog was taken to a local veterinarian as she was covered in ticks, emaciated, severely anemic, and possibly needing a blood transfusion. And then four others were removed. They might have valley fever. I have some information that the county would be interested in and anybody else that might be taking over Rough. The property's in foreclosure. A notice of trustee sale was recorded on December 23rd, 2013. But then Ms. Allison filed for bankruptcy, so there's a stay on the foreclosure. But an attorney can petition the bankruptcy court at any time, and there, the stay would be lifted, and they could follow through with the foreclosure. As far as Rough not having a 501(c)(3), I think it's been since 2006 that they haven't had a 501(c)(3). And I've printed out all the charities from Kingman, Bullhead, and Golden Valley, and nearly every other rescue that I'm aware of has their own 501(c)(3). She's been claiming that she comes under the umbrella of another organization called Citizens Committee for Animal Rights. That's in New York State. I called the IRS to ask about how these umbrellas work. They said that there is no such thing. The only time that you would have an umbrella would be like Red Cross, where they have many locations, and they would come under the umbrella of the main office. She is a nonprofit corporation with the Arizona Corporation Commission in good standing, but that organization is administrative, not regulatory. So to be in good standing, to be a corporation, all you have to do is pay your fees and submit an annual report.
Thank you.
And, am I done?
Yeah, your, your time's up.
I've got 30-
Well, it's not.
34 seconds.
I'm sorry.
Now you made me forget what I was going to say. It's gone. Thank you.
I have a question. You were talking about anybody can file with the state to be a 501(c)(3), but-
No, no. The state doesn't give 501(c)(3)'s.
With the Corporation Commission.
The Corporation Commission. You just say, "I'm a nonprofit."
Right.
You pay your fee. It doesn't mean anything. It doesn't give you the right to not pay taxes when you buy something or give receipts for donations.
Correct. That's what I just wanted to bring out, that even though that you can, you and I can file for that.
Yeah. So all the income that she's getting, all the donations she's getting, she should declare to the IRS at tax time.
Same thing with the people who are donating, write it off their taxes, they don't longer have a-
Yeah.
That was all, Madam Chair. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Carmen Johnson? Give us your name and address. You have three minutes, and I'll try to-
Madam Chairman, Supervisors, my name's Carmen Johnson. I live at 1162 South Drake, City of Golden Valley. I will, you already have some paperwork for me when you get a chance to review it. I will say, for the ladies with the Health Department, I think they were trying to be nice, even though it was outside of their department. And for Christina, now the VP of Roughs, I believe she was thrown headfirst into it, but I know her outside of Roughs, and her heart is very much in the right place and caring for these animals. It's a mess. Supervisor Angus, you were asking about who would confirm whether or not the condemned home has been being lived in? I would say that would be on the sheriff's department to make periodic patrols and check. It's my understanding that the electric has been cut off, the water has been left on due to the care for the animals. I've been one of the ones that has been an impetus behind getting people to seriously donate food, get out there, volunteer, and adopt. So the adoptions, I believe, and you can confirm with Christine, have probably increased a hundredfold over what they've been for the last couple of years. Everybody loves the animals, everybody wants everything okay, but sometimes it just, it becomes too much. And I think that's what the situation is here. If I could answer any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for the speaker?
Everything okay? Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer Jones, you're up next, followed by David Langman and Kimberly Norman. And last will be Dawn Slote.
Jennifer Jones, La Posta North LTVA Court Site. I'm speaking today as someone who was volunteering at Rough when I was running for the state House of Representatives. I have not physically been on the property since mid-July. However, I can probably answer a lot of the questions that you've been asking the previous speakers that they were not able to answer. Additionally, I was the Executive Director of Legislative Affairs for the All-American Dog Registry. I'm very familiar with dog law, dogs as property, conversion of property, and due process. One of the problems that you're going to run into, and I'm, I'm saying this again, I'm not speaking as a fan or a foe, I'm only speaking to facts, and I will answer any of your questions on the record as to facts of which I am aware of. Part of the problem that you have, if you revoke the license, is that revocation is entitled to due process under the Constitution. I think everyone here is probably aware that Ms. Allison does have legal counsel. I would anticipate legal counsel would file an appeal, an appeal would stay action. This thing could be drug on for quite some time. During the time that I was there, I was responsible for, when I, when I stopped volunteering, I was responsible for 46 dogs on the yard, not counting my own personal dogs. So I'm very much aware of the procedure, the process, how they're fed, how food comes, how donations come, who's responsible for what, how the animals are maintained, and how much one person can do in a day, whether or not 15 minutes is even reasonable. Actually, I was able to get it down to where the pens were cleaned, the buckets were bleached, the dogs were fed, in a much less period of time. Now, having said that, I am also aware of the condition of the outside kennels. The dogs were happy. I have no knowledge of anything inside the house, never having personally been inside the house. I am aware that there is a great volunteer staff and that they keep the place running. I'm also very much aware that if the weather gets bad and the road gets washed out, it's very hard for people to get in to get the work done. And I know for a fact that in my section, there were three dogs that, as a former guard dog agitator, I chose to let Hillary care for, and she did. Not all of these dogs are adoptable, a lot of them are old. As someone who ran the de facto animal shelter in Court Site for a couple of years and rehomed as a hobby, countless dogs and cats, I also know that in rescue, you tend to take the sickest and most elderly in closest to you where you can keep an eye on them. I think it is not acceptable that there was not a contingency plan for hospitalization or that people were not aware of what may or may not have been happening inside the house. I also know that the county was aware of this, to the best of my knowledge, since July 14th, and that you need to look at the animal control follow-up on, on the summer. I thought it had been taken care of. I would like to answer your questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. David Langman? Give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is David Langman, P.O. Box 22292, Bullhead City, Arizona. I'm here just as a neutral party. I represent and have been speaking with many rescues around the nation that want to help, but they will not help until, or if, you guys decide to shut Rough down. I've worked out there on another rescue, the OAS dogs that Hillary had taken in. So I am very aware of what it takes to rescue a large group of dogs and get them out to rescues. I know this can be done, but it won't be done until you guys take whatever action you're going to do. I don't believe rescues will step in if she is continued, if Rough has continued to run the way it is. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Dawn Slote?
My name is Dawn Slote. I live at 597 South Santa Cruz Road in Golden Valley. Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity. I was not aware if we were going to be able to speak today or not, so I sent each of you an email as well, and almost all of you have responded, so I've known you've seen it, so I won't repeat what I've said in the email. Based on what I've heard today, I would just like to reiterate something that I, I did put in the email, a comment that I saw just sticks with me throughout this entire process and hearing what I've heard today. That being, the first rule of running a rescue is knowing your limits. That is a concept that does not seem to have been absorbed here. I have no doubt that the best intentions were had when this endeavor was started and probably still exists today, however, this appears to have completely gotten out of control. It's something that has gone on now for years and seems almost like the can gets kicked down the road. We go in and we see things are wrong, we give time and time and time to fix things, more chances, and I'm concerned that if more chances are given, we're going to be addressing this again. I do not know the legalities, and I could be wrong here. If having a license to operate this type of facility is a privilege and not a right, then I would encourage the officials to take whatever actions they need to take to remove this license so that this does not continue. If it is allowed to continue, I would ask, the only way that I would see that this could continue and make any sense is to severely limit the number of animals that are allowed at this rescue. If I saw the correct records, the county has allowed her to have 200 dogs and 100 cats. For someone that relies largely on volunteers that come and go and on funds from the Board of Directors' personal bank accounts, they cannot manage this number of animals. So if it does continue, I would ask that the number be limited to something very, very small that can be managed, and that perhaps is an alternative to going through the headache of trying to revoke a license. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so I just want to make a, make a note that I did receive many, many emails in opposition of allowing this shelter to go forward. I've received phone calls with the same, and most of the people that, that want to support this rescue want, want to see it diminished in size, and, and so I have been listening. I know that we have to move slowly based on state regulations and county ordinances and allow the sheriff's office to finish their investigation before we go forward. That's my understanding, anyway. Does any of the other board members want to comment?
Madam, Madam Chair, I don't want to see the lady that spoke earlier that is the new president of Rough-
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, getting any kind of financial trouble or anything, but I, I know, looking at what the papers have been filed with the state, Ms. Allison was the president, Ms. Robert Hopkins was the secretary, and also the treasurer. The directors were Jacqueline Bled, and that's out of New York, and this Hopkins guy's out of Florida. And then Donna Anderson was Kingman, and then Hillary Allison were, were directors. And it's the same thing on both corporation filings with the state, but I think we're here to take care of the animals, and I think, I don't think there's any way possible that the way it's going now is, is going to happen, and I would be for revoking it as soon as possible. I believe it was, it was nice of our Health Department to give him the extension, but I don't think there's any possible way that these four people can come up with the money and continue to fund this. Thank you. And I have that paperwork that I had them bring down, if you're interested in the filings and the names. So you don't think I made them up?
Attorney Ekstrom, can you advise us where we stand legally on, on this? What, what can we do? How quick can we act and-
Madam Chair, I know Mr. Tealer worked on this for a while, so I'm not sure precisely what he, he said, but I can tell you this, if we've created an extension through the Health Department, that pretty much ties the Health Department's hands until the 30th comes along. With regard to the permit or the license, I suppose you could make a motion to revoke it conditioned upon the conditions not improving there. It may just be best to wait a week or so until the Health Department gets an opportunity to look on site. It seems like people are taking care of the animals presently. They're being fed and watered, and I don't think we're going to lose any animals during the course of time, so you're better off taking the conservative tack and waiting till the 30th to see if the violations are abated.
And how quickly can we act on the 30th if-
If they're not, you can-
-the conditions haven't been met and the-
Sure, you can act immediately.
When's the next board meeting?
I guess my question, Madam Chair, would be, you're taking the, and I'm not saying anybody is stretching the truth, but you have volunteers that are out there that are saying that this is all being done and everything's well and good. We have no idea how many animals are out there, how many animals have been adopted. I know that adoption fees have not been lowered, you know, to try to get rid of animals. I mean, if that was me and I said, "Man, I, I can't do this," and somebody said, "I will take this animal," I would give it to them for free. I wouldn't be charging them the money to, if, if I was really interested in the animals. And, and just like today, we have, and not saying anything about Ms. Anderson or anything, but we have dealt with Ms. Allison, who at, to this point, has ignored the county. We can't, we can, we can do whatever we want, but I mean, we have nothing in front of us that says this lady is a new owner, this lady's going to do it. With all due respect to the county attorney, I still think that the, the Health Department made a recommendation, they, they put it longer than they should have, and I think we could revoke that if we so choose.
Are there any other comments, statements? Supervisor Moss, do you want to chime in?
Only to say that, well, I sympathize with Supervisor Johnson's comments. I believe if our employees had given them a timeframe, we should honor that. I think it's reasonable to wait till the next board meeting before we take what might be draconian action. But I sympathize with his opinion. I think one person, instead, volunteers and rescues need to know their limits. This was clearly forgotten in this place, and there's a, there is a problem that needs to be corrected.
The next Board of Supervisors meeting is January the 3rd, the 5th? January the 5th. January the 5th? I'm showing that as a Thursday.
I believe it, I believe it's the 3rd, isn't it? The next meeting?
Isn't it January the 2nd?
No, the 2nd's a holiday.
I'm glad I'm not the only one having problems with dates. And by the way, I was at Rough on the 13th. I did check the calendar. Okay, so this will be inspected by the Health Department on the 30th, and then the next board meeting would be the 3rd, unless we wanted to call a special board meeting the, the afternoon of the 30th and really jump on it, so. So there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. What do we want to do?
Madam Chairman, you still have one yet to speak.
Are you sure? I'm losing dates, but what's the name? I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you.
Kimberly Norman.
You were skipped, Kimberly. Come on up. While we figure out what we want to do, you can speak to us, give us your name, address, and...
Thank you. My name's Kimberly Norman. I live at 1033 South Estrella Road in Golden Valley. I'm not here to make a judgment on her, but I do know I volunteered out there for three months. I found areas that she was grossly in compliant with. Dog foods are supposed to be stored in a manner that they cannot be, vermin cannot be gotten into them. They're kept in a shed full of mouse droppings and rat droppings. The dog food, when you would open the bags from wherever she was getting them from, in California, they were full of beetles and beetle larvae, and we were told to feed that to the dogs. As far as the water bowls go, there's not supposed to be algae, there's not supposed to be standing water in their kennels, but yet, all of the bowls, all of the swimming pools that they had were covered in algae. She had standing water when we would dump the swimming pools every day. There would be standing water in the kennels that had algae all over the top. There's, the cages are supposed to be safe in a way that the animals can't get hurt, but there's sharp edges, there's pieces of metal that are filed together. There's a dog out there that's in a kennel that's three feet tall. He's got a tarp over it, so basically, he lives in a cave. I had to bend over, crawl in backwards, sit on top of the doghouse to scrape the feces out of his cage. There are dogs that I saw that were so old and in pain that they should have been put down long ago. I saw two dogs out there that died. I was told by Hillary they were buried on the property. I don't think that that was legal, especially for somebody who's running a rescue where you have many dogs die. I saw one dog in the three months I was there that was adopted. That's it. She had a pig brought in, somebody brought, that he found in the desert. His nails were four, five inches long. She never had a vet come out to take care of those nails, not in the three months I was there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I skipped over you.
That's okay.
Thanks for calling that to my attention. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to bring this matter back to us at our first meeting in January, or sooner if the chairman elects to call a special meeting. But in the meantime, no further extensions are to be given in order to bring this property into compliance.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four to one.
Emphasis on "or sooner."
"Or sooner," yeah, that was part of the motion, definitely. Item number 47, Discussion and Possible Action Ray Authorized Staff to Distribute Water Related Legislative Proposals to the Governor's Water Augmentation Council. The Arizona Department of Water Resources would they copied Hunter Moore National Resource Policy Advisor in reference to the Northwest Basin's Planning Area Process. Supervisor Moss, this is under your name, so I'll let you take the floor.
Yes, I think we're all aware that we worked out a proposal which is supported by the County Supervisors Association. My understanding is that Representative Regina Cobb is going to take that proposal for some other proposal that she put together to the state legislature. We met, myself and Supervisor Bishop, met with Hunter Moore, regarding their take on Mojave County's proposals, and it was suggested that Mojave County present this proposal to the Northwest Basin Planning Area Group, which is basically a subsection of the...
Supervisor Moss, can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, could you take your discussion outside? We're having difficulty hearing. Okay, Supervisor Moss, I think we can hear you now, if you'll continue.
Thank you. And at that meeting, it was suggested that we present our proposal to the Northwest Basin Planning Area Process Committee, which is part of the Arizona Department of Water Resources. I believe they've had three public meetings already in Kingman. And Mojave County is a stakeholder, that they would appreciate Mojave County's participation as a stakeholder in that process. So, I believe it would be incumbent to Mojave County to formally present our proposals to the Northwest Basin Planning Area Process Committee, which is headed up by the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and provide Hunter Moore with the governor's office, he's the National Resource Advisor for the governor, a copy so that they know that we are following their recommendations, and that we also appoint one or more board members to attend these meetings. I know I've attended one, I know Supervisor Bishop's attended at least one, maybe two, but we maybe want to get more formal representation and make sure that people are aware that Mojave County is engaged and is supporting the governor's processes to solve the basin problem that we have at the Walupi Basin elsewhere. It's my opinion that we will, the governor is a strong supporter of Mojave County, he wants to help us, and I also think without his help, we won't get through the state legislature. So, let's leave Regina Cobb, Representative Cobb, to handle the legislative side thing of Mojave County provides her all support of course, but at the same time, Mojave County should engage in the Northwest Area Basin Process, Basin Process, excuse me. I'm a little feverish, and if I'm stumbling, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you very much. Well, if that's a motion, that's an awful long one, so. Do you want to condense that down into a motion?
If I went over, I would make a motion that we provide a copy of these proposals, which are attached to the item on the agenda, to ADWR to be incorporated into the Northwest Basin Area Planning Process, and provide a copy, and also designate one or more board members to participate formally as Mojave County's representatives, and copy that to Hunter Moore so that the governor understands that we are participating and giving all credibility to his efforts to solve Mojave County's groundwater issues.
Okay, that was his motion, so.
I'll second that.
We have a motion.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
A motion and a second, and for Supervisor Johnson would like to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be voting no on this, not because I don't think we need to do the water legislation, but three parts of it. I don't like special legislation where it singles out two special counties. I think that can cause problems down the line. The second one is on the fees. I have no problem in supporting the idea that we would charge fees to people who are moving our water outside of the county. And the fees, once it's kind of a slippery slope, you know, once you start there, if you're going to start charging fees to people just pulling wells out, you know, once the fees are in place, it can always be expanded. And then I don't know what we're going to do with the money. We don't really waterbank money, we don't really waterbank, you know, water. And then, the idea that we'd give the authority to, or the authority could come to the Board of Supervisors to monitor people's wells, I just see that fraught with the opportunity, not saying this board, but it would be going on, and while all of us have the best intentions, I can see some people that might get into power who would use it for personal indebtedness. But the rest of it, I agree with, that's the only reason I'm voting against it.
If I could respond, Madam Chair, briefly?
Sure, Supervisor Moss.
Yes, when it comes to the fees, that essentially is already happening in three Arizona counties when it comes to the AMAs. If you pump water as a production user, they charge fees, and those fees are then transferred into funds which are used to augment water supplies or conserve water supplies. So, it's nothing more than what's already going on in the three counties that have AMAs. The level of those fees, how they would be assessed, would obviously have to go through the governor and the state legislature, but the concept, we're presenting concepts to them which will obviously have to be refined over time. When it comes to the special legislature nature of this, the governor's office correctly said that Arizona is not a one-size-fits-all solution, and that's why they divided Arizona into 22 districts, planning area districts, based upon geographic considerations, not political considerations. And that's why this is referred to as the Northwest Basin Planning Area. So, the legislation that we're discussing, if ever got to that point, would be targeting these areas, because our areas are separate and distinct from the other 21 areas that the governor has identified. They are not waiting to have a solution in all 22 districts before they move. They're looking for regional solutions, because these are regional problems which are distinguishable from each other. When it comes to the monitoring, the proposal is that ADWR would do the monitoring and the inspections. If ADWR does not want to do that, given that, if and when the state gave them that authority, that authority could be delegated to the counties if we chose to accept it, which I personally would. But unless, this is the problem that we have throughout all of Arizona. Production wells are going in and they are pumping water. We do not know how much water they are pumping, because you need to have that data to determine the extent of a problem in any aquifer. And there is no legal power for ADWR to gather that information. So, we know how much water was in the Walupi Basin in 2010. We don't know how much water has been pumped out. And until ADWR has the right to require that production wells report their pumping amounts, they can't tell you how much is left. Our engineering department, I think, is taking good faith estimates as to what is going in there, but we see a well, we don't know what kind of motors on it, we don't know how the valve pipe's going in. ADWR conceded, they don't have the information to figure out what's the maximum potential. They don't. They know that they were presented with a permit to drill a well, and they granted that permit, but how active that well is, they have no idea. So, these are, half the tools that we've suggested is just to give the state of Arizona the power to collect information so that they can suggest solutions to real problems as opposed to imagined problems. The other half, of course, is pollution ideas. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, is that we're trying to assist the state gather information, because right now, they don't have that information. It's purely voluntary, and a lot of people are against their self-interest to provide that voluntary information.
Madam Chair, I just also want to remind everyone that this legislation that we've been showing around that went through CSA is a draft. It's a draft, and when Regina Cobb, who has agreed to sponsor it, she'll get all the legal backing that we need, whether it is a special, I know that she was a little concerned about that, will have all the sort of the backing, the legal backing that we need, and maybe things will change, and I'm sure between now and then, by the time it gets voted, we'll be hearing about it again, we'll have our legislators come and talk to us. Is that correct, Supervisor Moss?
Absolutely. This is a draft concept. Mojave County has no ability to impose their will on everybody.
So, with that, I'm going to...
As does the governor's office, and this will change over time.
Right, exactly. So, I think I seconded it, I think I seconded it, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
Call for the question.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one, and now I'm going to hand the gavel over to our new 2017 chairman, Supervisor Watson, and ask him to adjourn the meeting.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Chairman.